Good afternoon, everyone. The time is 1:08 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of 2011-2019 is called to order. The next item on our agenda is public participation in the State Board of Education meeting. Marilyn, I believe we have individuals who wish to address the board today.
We do have individuals who want to address the board today. So, I'm going to read from my sheet so that I make sure you, I say everything that you need to know. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments heard during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people, and disrespecting anyone by name will be gavelled down and asked to cease. The public participation guidelines state that forms must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. And I believe I have all your forms. If not, please send them to me. Thank you. We will be strictly following the time limits, which is three minutes, so that everyone has the opportunity to speak. As you can see, there is an overflow crowd. After you have made your comment, please consider leaving the room so that others may be allowed to enter and provide their comments. Thank you. So what I'll do is I'll tell you who's going to speak, and the speakers will come to the end of the table. If you've got written materials to share, just give them to the person closest to you, and they'll pass them around the table for you. So our first speaker is Senator Lana Tice, followed by Senator Rick Jones. Senator Tice here? Okay, I see Senator Jones. Would you like to start, please?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Rick Jones, and I'm here today to discuss our social studies K-12. I'm in support of making them as accurate and as inclusive as possible. As a former state senator, as a state representative, and as sheriff, I had the honor and privilege of serving a very large Sikh community. In fact, they're building a new temple in Eaton County. The Sikh have made many, many contributions to our communities and to the state. They have values of justice, tolerance, equality, the same lessons that I want all of our Michigan children to learn in public education. In order for us to build a more tolerant, respectful, and inclusive society that recognizes diversity is one of our strongest strengths that we have in this state, I think we must start by teaching our children about all of the communities. Now, some Sikh have faced discrimination because many, not all, but many, wear the traditional turban and grow a beard, and I think it's important that our children learn who they are so they don't discriminate. They've been in the United States, Sikh people, for 125 years. They have the fifth-largest religion in the world. I believe that Sikhs across Michigan should have their culture and their community taught accurately in our social studies standards. So my ask is very simple, that corrections be made to the standard W-3.2 when they are passed, and make sure that they're inclusive and as accurate of all communities as possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rahalio Landine, followed by Dan Quisenberry.
Interim Superintendent Ellis, Board President Ulbricht, Board members. Five years ago Superintendent Plantigan invited me to come before the board to present an equity solution that was developed based on data and evidence from the successful closing Achievement Gap Ohio project. He also appointed me to serve on the Achievement Gap Critical Friends Work Group. Upon his retirement, Mike penned an article stating that Michigan was 10 years behind. That was five years ago. We had met a couple of times, and he believed there was merit in our solution and that the board needed to be informed of it. 2015 brought about the Michigan Top 10 and 10 Initiative. We are now entering the halfway point, not having realized the relative accomplishments required to achieve the goal. At the core of the issue is funding, as confirmed in the report issued earlier this year for the Michigan School Finance Collaborative. These past five years have provided numerous reports and studies, e.g., Business Leaders for Michigan K-12, Governor Snyder's 21st Century Commission, Ed Trust Midwest. This morning, the 2019 Building a Grad Nation report was released, and tomorrow, Future Ready's Equity is Education Goals Online. Over the past year, the Michigan Civil Rights Commission has held hearings on education. The Center for Michigan has held education summits. This year's Mackinac Policy Conference showcased education as a top priority. I could go on, but in all of these, there is one thing conspicuous by its absence, an answer to the question of how to pay for it. This is the question our solution addresses. Had our equity solution been adopted and implemented four years ago, it would have provided for education an additional $16 billion for 500,000 low-income students. Today, for our 750,000 at-risk students, it would mean an additional $6 billion a year. Five years ago, Superintendent Ellis and Rice, along with the majority of this board, were not present. The information shared then was essential. Today, it is critical and more timely than when first presented. This is to request an opportunity to come before this new board and superintendent to revisit and update the applicability of our solution, given Michigan's crisis in education. If we act now, we can still make 10 and 10 in the next five. Thank you. Appreciate your time. I will follow up in writing with that request. Thank you so much.
Dan Quisenberry is our next speaker, followed by Judge Michael David Warren Jr.
Superintendent and President of the Board, we have a group, so hopefully we get more time. We know you have a lot of voices to hear from today, so we wanted to be efficient.
Can I interrupt you for just a second, Dan? When there is a group of more than three people, they can yield their time to one spokesperson for 10 minutes, and this is what you see happening with Dan Quisenberry here. Thank you.
I'm the President of the Michigan Charter School Association, and as I said, we wanted to be efficient to voice our concerns today. At the last meeting you had in May, there were some significant questions raised about charter schools that we knew information wasn't provided for. So, comments that were made we were concerned about was there's no oversight, no scrutiny, that charter schools don't serve special needs students, that charter schools don't serve English language learners, and that there's no need for new kind of public school options. None of that is true and frustrated us, so we wanted to come and have you meet the people that are applying for the grants you were reviewing at that moment. And I'm going to give quick seconds, Marilyn, if that's all right, for each of them to introduce themselves quickly, and we're going to fit into that nine minutes that's left.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Don Cooper. I'm representing the Michigan Council of Charter School Authorizers, and wanted to leave you with some information about the role of the authorizer in the chartering process and the oversight that we provide to charter schools and in the grant applications. We also wanted to express our sincere appreciation to the team at the department for what a positive working relationship we've had over the last seven years, and just very much looking forward to continuing that work. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Akwan Grant, and I am the proud principal of Westfield Preparatory High School, a replication of an existing high-performing charter school that will be opening this fall. As the sixth prep net school, I am excited for what our school will be able to offer the rep for community. Having been an inaugural principal before at a charter school and a key member of leadership teams that have achieved various honors and recognition, I know this school will become another great option for students. This summer, we are already hard at work identifying the needs of our students, so some of our teams have already worked with our special education teams to review IEPs. They've attended IEP meetings and are working hard to make sure we are very prepared for the fall. In addition, we have connected with Wayne County Community College District for early college programming, and what I am most proud of is that our unique schedule will allow us to address literacy in a brand-new way for our students. I invite all of you to visit one of our existing prep net schools, and of course, Westfield Prep in the fall.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. My name's Jim Musgrave. I'm one of the four founding board members for Ivywood Classical Academy in Plymouth. Ivywood's set to open this fall, and we owe a lot of our success to our amazing partners, the Barney Charter School Initiative, Central Michigan University, and Choice Schools Associate. But really, the driver of our success has been and continues to be the families in our community, the countless parents and students whose eyes light up when we talk about the classical liberal arts curriculum and moral character and civic virtue that our school will focus on. To see children excited and engaged about their learning, I mean, that's what we're all here for. That's what I am here for, and that's what I want to advocate for, genuine excitement and passion for learning that Ivywood is going to bring to our community and the children who live there. We started Ivywood because there's a high demand for this classical model in our area. Within days of announcing our opening in fall 2019, we had over 100 kids enrolled for K through 5. That number's growing steadily every week. I think the numbers speak for themselves, there's a genuine hunger and excitement for this model that's proven to be successful all around the country, and we aim to do this all as a public school, public in every sense of the word, open to all, regardless of income level or ability, held to the state and federal accountability measures as any other public school in our community. In fact, we're confident that our aforementioned partners will hold us even more accountable to deliver the kind of results that benefit our students, families, and our community at large. Let me be very clear and end with this statement. I am here for this reason and this reason only, and that is to advocate for choice and freedom for parents and families in my community and our great state, to choose an educational model and learning environment that best fits their needs, but above all else, I'm here because I want to continue seeing children's eyes light up when they talk, when we talk about their education. I want to continue inspiring wonder for the next generation.
Hi, good morning. I'm Debbie Prentice. I'm Superintendent of Rising Stars Academy in Centerline, Michigan. I'm a little unique from this group that I had not applied for a CPS grant right now, but I was the fortunate of being awarded one back in 2011. Our building is pretty unique in that we are a school for all intellectually-disabled IEP special needs students. We're a job skill, life skill training. I have 125 students. We've grown from 26 in the first year. We have onsite a restaurant, a commercial kitchen, a full-run bakery, food production facility, four-acre garden, four hoop houses, 12 14 chickens, sorry, 14 we have right now, and we are 100% hands-on school. We've had 40 students so far leave our academy and are employed, and we also, just now, we're ending the school year next year. We have 13 right now that have gotten summertime jobs. They're still going to come back to us in the fall. So we're unique in that we take care of all special needs kids, and it is an absolute blessing to our lives. My husband and I wrote the grant independently. We have no management company. We are the school, and so we welcome you to come and see us anytime.
Good afternoon, State Board of Education and Madam Superintendent. My name is Sean Townsend, and I am the proud principal of a charter school located in Detroit, Michigan, by the name of Escola Avancemos Academy. You can probably guess by that name that we service a lot of English language learners, hailing mainly from Hispanic backgrounds, and indeed, that is true. We have over 300 students, and I understand that there are some misconceptions related to whether or not charter schools have a high percentage or service English language learners. I can assure you, 90% of our kids are English language learners. And I just want to say a couple of things about our school. We've been in operation now for seven years, and the state has a new index system that it uses to grade schools, and we actually have one of the highest indices in the city of Detroit, despite the fact of having 90% English language learners, because we see that as an asset. And being a community school, and I think that's expressed by the fact I even have one of our parents with us today, we look to engage the whole community so that we can give kids a very comprehensive and holistic education. I want to thank the State Board of Education, Madam Superintendent, for doing your due diligence in reviewing the applications for the grant. Like I said, we've been around for seven years, but we've had some challenges in expanding to a sixth grade, so I'm happy to report that as of next year under CMU, we in fact will be expanding into a K through 8, so we were very much looking forward to using those funds to further that expansion. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, afternoon. My name is Beatrice. I am a parent from Escola Avancemos, and I want to talk a little bit about our school. I like the way they're working. They're focusing all the kids, special and special kids, and they now remove kids from the classroom. They always teach kids the same. I am one of the moms, but at the same time, I'm one of the members of PTA. I'm vice president, and we always make our feel welcome to the school, and I feel so happy to keep my kids in there. I got like, I have everything in there. It's like my kids growing a lot. They, you know, my English is not like perfect. It's not my first language, and my kids is growing, is learn a lot. And what I see in the school is they keep growing and growing, and I have another kid. I got a lot of struggles and put my other kid in another school. I speak like the same from Escola Avancemos, and I can find another school can bring me the same opportunities for my kids, keep growing, then Escola Avancemos. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Sharp, and I bring you the teacher's aspect. I'm a third-grade teacher at White Academy, and we are expanding, actually, our school is closing, and we are expanding two blocks down the street to Frontier International Academy. My school services over 50% of the EL population, not the Hispanic population, but the Middle Eastern population, which we know is expanding in our great cities. To refute some of the points that were made, that we don't service our EL students, I'm going to give you a kind of a testimonial. I had a student in our classroom from Bangladesh. I have Bengali, I have Yemen, and I have African-American students in my class, and they make up 33 and 1/3% each. The girl comes in not speaking very much English. In three months, with our dedicated support of our English language teachers, our awesome, amazing paraprofessionals, and the teachers there that have been trained in English language development, SIAP, multi-tiered, multifaceted instruction, this girl is thriving. She now speaks. She's excited about school. It's amazing. So, I'm getting teary, but you can see how passionate I am about the job that we're doing. This is from the teacher. I'm emotional because my kids are emotional. We are a community, and we thank you for your time and your consideration for this grant. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Our next speaker is Judge Michael David Warren Jr., followed by Senator Lana Tice. Hello again.
Good afternoon. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they're endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These words from the Declaration of Independence are the linchpin to the American system of government. With the exception of a few stray references, the current draft K-12 social studies standards uses, quote, "individual rights," unquote. Here, the Declaration of Independence is unequivocal. It refers directly to unalienable rights. This is not mere semantics. The concept of unalienable rights is central to the Declaration and our unique system of government. Jefferson expressed the essence of the founders' understanding when he wrote, quote, "A free people claim their right as derived from the rules," excuse me, "from the laws of nature and not as a gift from the chief magistrate," unquote. Founder John Dickinson explained that men claim their rights, quote, "from a higher source. They are not annexed to us by parchments and seals. They are created in us by the decrees of providence which establish the laws of our nature." They are born with us, exist with us, and cannot be taken from us by any human power. Alexander Hamilton explained that, quote, "The sacred rights of mankind are not to be rummaged for among old parchments and musty records. They are written, as with the sunbeam and the whole volume of human nature, by the hand of divinity itself, and can never be erased or obscured by mortal power." Individual rights is not conveying the origin of the rights nor their permanence. Individual rights can be secured through old musty records, laws, and ordinances. Individual rights can be given and taken away by the government. Individual rights can include social security benefits, the right to drive, and the right to Medicaid. Not using unalienable rights debases the entire intellectual framework embraced by the founders and subsequently leveraged by the abolitionists, the suffragists, and the civil rights movement. Frederick Douglass, Elizabeth Cady Stanton, Abraham Lincoln, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. all called upon unalienable rights. Dr. King reflected. The American dream, it wouldn't take long for us to discover the substance of that dream, words lifted to cosmic proportions. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they're endowed by God, Creator, with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. This is a dream. It's a great dream. That dream goes on to say another thing that ultimately distinguishes our nation and our form of government from any totalitarian system in the world. It says that each of us has certain basic rights that are neither derived from or conferred by the state. Never before in the history of the world has a social-political document expressed in such profound, eloquent, and unequivocal nature the dignity and worth of human personality. Using unalienable rights is much more historically accurate and fully encompasses this fundamental principle. This issue was raised and debated in the Civic Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee agreed to use unalienable rights. Nevertheless, this recommendation, along with so many others, was rejected by the drafting committee. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Senator Lana Tice, followed by Michelle Gregory.
Good afternoon. My name is Lana Tice. I am the Senate Chair of the Education and Career Readiness Committee. I know you care as much about education as I do, or you wouldn't be here, and I want to thank you for your service. I can tell you, a lot of parents are choosing to educate their children outside of the traditional system because they don't feel a balanced approach is being taught. So if we can take just one more step to make sure that we're offering that to them, let's do that. Let's bring them back into the system because they feel like fairness is being taught, and I want to make sure that we're doing that. I'm asking you to allow time for a professional review. I know that you guys have spent a lot of time on this. I know that a lot of time was spent previously, and I'm asking that we do one more review. Regardless of you appreciate whether or not it was a Republican or a Democrat that offered up this, please don't, please don't let the political letter associated with it make the difference. History is or is not, regardless of whether or not the letter after it made the recommendation. What part of history we focus on matters. We need to make sure we're teaching history. What I was looking at when I was reviewing the standards, page 37, and I'm going to go back to what the judge just said, on page 37 of your side-by-side comparison, the sentence said, "Give reasons why the framers wanted to limit the power of government and to whom those rights were granted." Then you removed the sentence "to whom those rights were granted." That is everything about our country. That absolutely empowers our people. It empowers the children to understand that those rights are not granted by the government. We don't give that to them. That is inherent in their being. Another one of the controversial issues had to do with whether or not we're a republic or a democracy. That's not a political statement. That's a type of government. Article 4, Section 4 of our U.S. Constitution says, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union a republican form of government." Republican. That's not a political party. That's a representative government. A democracy is two wolves and a sheep voting on what's for dinner. This protects the little guy. We need to make sure that that's what we're doing and that that's what we're teaching our kids. We need to make sure that we're teaching them a respect and a love for history. We need to make sure that we're not teaching them agenda. What a shame it is that we've chosen to ignore so much terrific and incredible history, and I want to make sure that what we're teaching is absolutely balanced in every way, and I'm asking you from the bottom of my heart to make sure that we get this right. I'm asking you that we put in a bit of a delay so that we have people from both sides of the aisle make sure that we are fully implementing this, that we're fully teaching all of our history in a balanced and fair manner. Thank you very much for your time. I will advise, I'll send some advices to who I'd like to see do that review. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Gregory, followed by Jasmine Early. And while Michelle is coming to the table, please feel free to correct me if I mispronounce your name.
It's Gregory. It's okay.
No, I want, I want your correct name, so anybody, please do that.
Just any time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, like I said, my name is Michelle Gregory, and I've been reading up on this. I'm not a part of any organization. I'm not here to attack anybody or anything like that. I come as a concerned parent of three kids. I pulled my kids out, the school year of 2017 to 18, and I homeschooled them for the year. Unfortunately, I had to re-enroll them back into public school, not really wanting to, but didn't have much of a choice because I had to work, so I didn't become homeless. So, in doing so, my kids know about the Constitution. They know a lot about history. My nine-year-old cracks me up all the time. She'll tell you several of the, you know, the First Amendment, the Second, the Fourth, the 10th. She doesn't know all of them yet, but she's still nine, so we're still working on it. But she goes to school, she doesn't really learn, you know, this curriculum. They're telling, you guys are going to tell them, like what she said, you're teaching her that it's a democracy and that it's not a constitutional republic. Now she's going to ask who's right. Well, was my mom right, or was my mom lying to me? Because I've got all these teachers telling me, well, it's a constitutional democracy. I think that's what it said on the thing I was reading, which is off the Michigan government site, so I wasn't reading some kind of right news propaganda or some craziness like that. And that's really scary to me. You know, I don't, I want my kids to know American history. I personally love, my favorite part of history was the Revolutionary War. It's my favorite part. In fact, I got the first three words of the Constitution tattooed on my arm, and it's not, because I love the Constitution in and of itself, and I love teaching my kids that history, but I don't want them to go to school and then be told something completely different, because that's basically what happened when I was going to high school. Granted, I went to school in Illinois, not Michigan, but their standards over there weren't much better either. There was a lot that was left out that left, you know, and stuff that really wasn't true and stuff like that. And I really don't want my kids to have to go to school and question, why are we being taught differently than what mom taught us? So, that's really all I've had to say. So, thanks, guys.
Our next speaker is Jasmine Early, followed by Janice Daniels.
Hi, I'm Jasmine Early, Hispanic, legal immigrant, an American citizen, an architect, a teacher, and a mom, who represents parents from McComb County. Area, I'm here to request you that you vote no on the social studies standards. Why it is important for me to tell you about my background? I sadly see the direction that you are trying to lead the education of our children, and it is not good. I will say it is wrong. I grew up in South America, and education was important. Mrs. Ulbrich stated in her speech this morning, quote, "Decisions are made on the best interest of the children," end of quote. Correct, Ms. Armstrong. If that is true, please reject the social study standards. Your role as head of our education department is not to push your social agenda that is disguised with terms as democratic values and constitutional principles of American government. Let me ask you, how many of you have read the U.S. Constitution? Or have you read the pledge of allegiance to this country? I pledge to this country. I had, and I read the studies, and I see that instead of teaching about assimilation and love for the principles that made this country great, you are encouraging an agenda that has caused the fall of good government in other countries. You are leading our kids toward your lefty, divisive agenda, instead allowing the parents to raise their kids. They belong to us. If you want to bring socialism here, I invite you to go to Venezuela, to taste socialism, and I promise you that you will come back to America and kiss American soil. Stop getting in our way. Stop playing politics with our kids. Stop writing anti-Christian agendas in the form of social Stop writing anti-Christian agendas in the form of social studies. Our kids should be subject to a political, neutral, and accurate social studies standards. No lefty-focused agenda. Our kids should not be a product of your campaign, campaigns, donors' agenda. Already several, several public schools have been closed in McComb County, and you can check. I got two next to my house, closed. Our kids will be exiting the public school system next school year if you do not stop this. We are, America is an inclusive country already. This room chills. Look around.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but we've got to adhere to three minutes.
I just want to close with this statement. I left you with this scripture, quote, "For what shall it profit a man if he shall gain the whole world and lose his own soul?" Mark 8:36. Say no to the social standards for the good of our kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janice Daniels, followed by Erica Sponsler.
Hello, yes, I am Janice Daniels, and I'm the former mayor of Troy, so I understand directly the experience of government by committee. And I know that bureaucracies feed bureaucracies rather than starving the government in an effort to keep it within its constitutional boundaries. I think it's truly disconcerting to know that concerned citizens of Michigan have to come before the State Board of Education elected officials to ask them to vote against new social study standards that do not teach our children critical aspects of American history and that rather push an ideological agenda that's opposed to a proper understanding of that history in favor of a globalist agenda that would have America cease to be the beacon of freedom that it has been since its founding. But unfortunately, this is nothing new. The same agenda-driven push has been in place for many years now. The names change, but the agenda stays the same. World Core Curriculum became America 2000, became Goals 2000, became No Child Left Behind, and now has become Common Core. The always same agenda is to push our children into a collectivist mindset that is designed to destroy their ability to self-govern. It's shameful that elected officials would even consider supporting this type of anti-American agenda. I didn't hear anyone this morning talk about any methods of reducing the spending. It's always increasing the taxes. That's your ever, forever push. I would bet that most law-abiding American voting citizens, if they knew of the goals that you're supporting, they would not have given you their vote in the first place. I pray that the voices of these concerned citizens who have shown up in Lansing today to stand in opposition to these so-called new social studies standards will be heeded. And yes, I do pray. And yes, I do support religious freedom as well as educational fidelity. And yes, this is a Christian nation. And yes, I will continue to advocate that Christian parents remove their children entirely from government-run schools because, in my humble opinion, the current-day public school system is fatally flawed beyond repair. This terrible state of public education, disinformation, and destruction has been put in place and promoted by, by the very globalists who would like to destroy American values and by sincere Americans who don't seem to have the strength to stand up for American values and by those so-called useful idiots who can't see the forest for the trees and don't seem to understand that our country, our sovereignty, our unalienable rights and our liberty that men and women have given their last full measure to protect and defend are still worth protecting and defending. Please vote no on these so-called new social studies standards. Thank you, and may God bless you all. Sincerely yours, Janice Daniels.
Erica Sponsler is next, followed by Chuck Eastup.
Thank you. My name is Erica Sponsler, and I am a 20-year social studies teacher from Jackson County. I have spent my entire life teaching social studies, studying social studies, and helping kids to understand social studies. I lead a network of teachers in Jackson County, and we frankly are excited about the new social study standards. We know that they aren't perfect. Nothing is perfect. But what we appreciate most is the process that went into this. Hundreds of teachers, over thousands of hours, worked hard with students, with community members, with all sorts of people to make these the best, most balanced standards that I've seen in 20 years' worth of teaching. All of our teams, all of the teams, not just the U.S. history team that I was a part of, made sure that we tried to take all perspectives into account: rural, urban, race, ethnicity, religion, liberal, conservative. But for me, the most important part was that students were a part of the process. Students are my life's work, turning people, turning kids into people who are going to participate in their government and their community. And I appreciated that we brought students to the table. Students, as a matter of fact, were some of the ones who brought the richest examples to our table. They live in this world. They are out there doing it every day. We frequently tell students that when they get to the real world, they'll know what it's like, but they know what it's like, and they enriched our examples greatly. So I appreciated their involvement. In my 20 years of teaching, I have tried to encourage students to seek to understand the world and everyone in it, to practice freedom, equality, truth, and justice. And I think these benchmarks will help other teachers to help their students do the same. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chuck Eastup, followed by Aureen Cor.
Good afternoon, Board of Education, Superintendent, and fellow citizens. I bring greetings from the Monroe County Intermediate School District, and we would like to speak to you today about the new draft social study standards. We're writing to extend our enthusiastic support for board approval of the new draft standards to replace our current standards. As you well know, a great deal of thoughtful work, collaboration, and feedback has gone into the creation of this new draft by skilled social studies professionals in public education and with other stakeholders. This work represents the best in providing clear definitions of higher standards for student learning and responsible citizenship. The leadership within the Michigan Department of Education is to be commended for their determination and wisdom in guiding this thoughtful process to this pivotal moment in educational history for Michigan. These new standards provide the opportunity for students to learn more deeply. MDE's Top 10 in 10 Years Initiative, Goal Two, articulates that as educators, we should, quote, "implement high-quality instruction in every classroom through a highly coherent, child-centered instructional model where students meet their self-determined academic and personal goals to their highest potential." Further Strategies 2.3 and 2.4 within Goal Two intimates the need for deeper learning for students and the implementation of pedagogy to support it. We believe these draft standards provide the platform by which social studies educators can lead students to, one, think and learn more deeply; two, be prepared for post-secondary education; and, three, lead to responsible citizenship. As Michigan educators work to improve both instruction and curriculum for students, it is essential that we have standards which provide for greater learning and discovery by students. Additionally, it is vital that funding for professional learning for teachers and the utilization of quality assessment is placed and planned and appropriated once these standards are approved. I appreciate the opportunity to have presented this on behalf of Dr. Stephen McNew, the Superintendent of the Monroe County ISD, my direct supervisor, Lisa Montreef, the Assistant Superintendent for Monroe County ISD. I'm an educational consultant and been in education since 1990, and it's a privilege to be able to speak with you about the future of the United States and the state of Michigan. Have a good afternoon.
Aureen Cor, I may be saying...
Averine.
Averine, okay. My apologies. Did you want to, did you want to sit with her?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. Followed by Sandeep Singh. Whenever you're ready, we're ready.
My name is Averine Cor, and I am eight years old. I am from Michigan, and I go to elementary school in Penford District. I also have a brother who is three years old. My family has lived in Michigan for over 20 years. Thank you to the board for giving me the chance to speak. At the Listen and Learn session at Cal, in Kalamazoo, I shared that it would make me very happy if my friends could learn Sikhism, the fifth-largest religion. Most people don't know much Sikhism. And if we were taught in school, it, it will help kids understand who I am. I also shared that it would make me happy to know that when my brother goes to school, he will also feel safe and happy and be able to make friends because people will understand him too. I hope that before you make these new standards final, Sikhism will definitely be included in the list of world religions. Learning about others is an important part of school. Thank you for your time.
Sandeep Singh is next, followed by Nick Talwar.
See, I do need her.
Okay. You can have her.
My name is Sandeep Singh. I am parent of three-year-old son and eight-year-old daughter. We just spoke. Thank you for giving me an, giving the opportunity to speak about latest draft of standards. A lot of hard work has gone into them. I look forward to seeing them pass today with your votes. As a parent, I am naturally concerned about my children's well-being at school. As they get older, the concern will grow when they attend high school. It would give me an reinsurance if Sikhism was included accurately in new social study standards. Children learning about all world religions is invaluable and not only helps reduce bullying but also prepares our children to be responsible citizens in today's globalized world. As well as attending Listen and Learn session in Kalamazoo, I alongside 400 other Sikh community members who input into public comment. Unfortunately, despite being the world's fifth-largest religion, Sikhism has still excluded from the list of world religions in standard Walker 3.2, that's W3.2, The Growth and Development of World Religions. There is also factual inaccuracy in the standards about when it was founded. My family and this community want these standards to pass. Our ask is that you pass the standards with amendments to add Sikhism to Walker 3.2 to make the standards more inclusive. I can provide a copy of suggested edits and my statement. Thank you again for the time.
Our next speaker is Nick Talwar, followed by Sandeep Singh Sidhu.
Thank you. My name is Manminder Nick Talwar from Shelby Township, Michigan. I'm a parent of a 12-year-old boy who attends public school in the Utica School District. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on the proposed Michigan K-12 social study standards. I moved to Michigan at the age of six and have lived in Michigan for the past 40 years and have served as an attorney here for the past 19 years. I am also a member of the Sikh community, and like the community here, I am appreciative that the standards are being reviewed again since 2006. These standards are a step in the right direction. My request is that you add an amendment to these standards to include Sikhism. Following Christianity, Islam, Hinduism, and Buddhism, Sikhism is the fifth-largest world religion. Despite this, it was mistakenly excluded from the list of world religions in the standard W3.2, The Growth and Development of World Religion. There is also a factual inaccuracy in the standards about when it was founded and developed. I do want the standards to pass, and as others have stated, we hope to count on your vote. Our collective ask is that amendments are made to the standard W3.2 in the passing of the standards. I can attest these changes will go a long way in developing the cultural competency which these standards hope to achieve and specifically help students to communicate and collaborate effectively with the variety of communities in today's globalized world. The inclusive, the inclusivity and accuracy of these new standards is critical for the future well-being of our public school students. I can provide a copy of the suggested edits and a copy of these statements for the records. Thank you.
Sandeep Singh Sidhu is next, followed by Chani Mangat.
My name is Sandeep Singh Sidhu from Canton, Michigan. I'm a parent and a member of the Sikh community in Canton. My wife, Anupam Sidhu, is a board member of Plymouth Canton Public School System. I have a 13-year-old son, Jashin Singh Sidhu, who is in grade seven at the Liberty Middle School. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding the proposed Michigan K-12 social study standards. Too often in life, we form bias and prejudice because of lack of information and exposure. To me, this highlights a fear of the unknown. This fact home hit recently at an interfaith event that my wife and I attended in the metro-Detroit area. One of the panel members shared that her granddaughter visited the local Gurdwara, a Sikh house of worship, as part of her school world religious study curriculum. After the visit, the granddaughter shared that she was so glad that she visited the Gurdwara, and it helped her to overcome her fear and misunderstanding of men in Turban. She got to learn about the Sikh faith and why Sikhs wear turban. She said it was an amazing experience to her to watch that the Gurdwara serves free meals to everyone, preached equality of humanity, and was very welcoming of all people. We, as a society, need to educate and communicate effectively to our children about all different faiths and communities as part of social study standards. It will help us to become a more tolerant society. I sincerely hope that Sikhism will be included in the list of world religions in the passing of these new standards. I can provide a copy of the suggested edits to the standard W3.2, The Growth and Development of World Religions, and a copy of the statement for the records. Thanks again for your time and consideration.
Chani Mangat is next, followed by Rishi Makar.
My name is Chani Singh Mangat, and I am from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm 16 years old, and I attend Northern High School in the Forest Hills Public School District. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on the proposed Michigan K-12 social study standards. As a high school student, I can share with you how much I value learning about diversity. Understanding our world and American history and the contributions diverse communities have made is a critical part of our education. As a Sikh, it has always concerned me that despite being the world's fifth-largest religion, our community has generally been overlooked. I was thrilled to hear the new so, social study standards are moving in the right direction to more accurately represent the diversity of Michigan. I hope that each of you will vote to pass these standards with the amendments we are asking for in W3.2. A similar correction to include Sikhism has also been made in nine other states without objection. These states include Texas, California, New Jersey, New York, Colorado, Tennessee, Idaho, Arizona, and Oklahoma. Let's make Michigan the tenth state today. I also want to thank the board for allowing us to be part of this process, which empowers students like myself to voice their opinions. I plan to encourage other students to get more involved in the process after my experience today. I can provide a copy of the suggested edits to standard W3.2, also known as The Growth and Development of World Religions, and a copy of this statement for the record. I would also like to add some things off this paper that, that make me believe why Sikh... that make me believe why Sikhism should be included in these standards. If you, you all have devices present over here. If you were to search up the world's largest soup kitchen, it's going to come up with the Golden Temple. The Golden Temple, which is in Amritsar, India, is the world's largest soup kitchen, feeding three hundred thousand people every single day, free of cost. Three hundred thousand people every day can go there if they need food or shelter and they will be provided free of cost, regardless of their religion, sex, caste, or creed. It has doors on all four sides, symbolizing that it's open to everyone, regardless of anything that I just stated. Also, I, I know you guys are very busy people and you do a lot for us and I thank you for that. I strive to be just like you guys. But I really humbly request that out of your day, maybe before you go to bed, take ten minutes out of your day and search up Sikh history. If your mouth did not drop jaw, I have nothing, I don't know what to tell you guys. You will be very odd. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rishi Makar, followed by Harpal Singh.
Good afternoon. My name is Rishi Makar from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm a parent and an interfaith liaison within the Grand Rapids community. I've lived here in Michigan for the past twenty-nine years and my children attend Forest Hills Public Schools here in Michigan. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. As you can tell, I'm a member of the Sikh community and I'm passionate about educating people and raising awareness. My family and I agreed to be featured in a PBS show to share more about our religion and identity because there's not enough information being shared in classrooms and public spaces to build understanding between communities. Making these standards more accurate and inclusive will help to solve that problem. More inclusive standards will not only benefit Sikhs, but all of Michigan's communities. Although I am appreciative that efforts have been made to make the standards more inclusive, I am disappointed that despite the input into public comment, Sikhism still has yet to be included, or is, still has been excluded from the list of world religions in standard W3.2, Growth and Development of World Religions. There's also factual inaccuracy in the standards about when it was founded. I alongside other members of the Sikh community want the standards to pass and hope to count on your vote. We ask that the amendments are made to W3.2 in the passing of our standards. I can obviously provide a copy of the suggested edits and a copy of the statement for the record. Thank you again for your time.
Harpal Singh is next, followed by Gurbakhan Singh Kalsa.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Harpal Singh and I live in Oakland Township. And I've been in Michigan for the last thirty-eight years and working for General Motors for the last thirty-eight years. My two kids have gone to Rochester School System and they happily graduated from the Rochester School System. Now I'm here along with my community member to request the amend to the social studies standards, 3.2 to include Sikh religion as one of the major religion of the world. I'll tell you why it is important. My life, my all working life, thirty-eight years, I often, I, you know, misunderstood somebody else than Sikh. And I explain them every year who I am. And then next year, again, they address me differently, same people, same colleagues. I never understood why this is happening that way. Now I understand because most of our thoughts are formed, most of our connections are formed in our school system. So this is why it is so important to teach in schools from K to 12 about our religion. Let people know there's a fifth-largest religion in the world called Sikh religion. So I am again, like my community member, urging you to make that amend and let those kids know who Sikhs are so that when they grow up and go in the public life or anywhere else, they're not just differently every year like I've been in my workplace. Thanks for time and I'll give my statement and amendments for the record. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Gurbakhan Singh Kalsa, followed by Michael Libby.
Good afternoon. My name is Gurbakhan Singh from West Bloomfield, Michigan. My family and I have lived over thirty years in Michigan. Our three boys attended the public school in West Bloomfield and they have been successful in their life because of the wonderful school system. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As a community member alongside with the four hundred other Sikh, Michigan Sikh community members took part in online public comments to voice our specific concern and submitted suggested edits for the accurate inclusion of Sikhism. The collective letter of to all Gurdwaras, our Sikh house of worship was also submitted requesting the changes. However, Sikhism has still been excluded from the list of world religions in standard W3, W3.2, The Growth and Development of the World Religions. There is also factual inaccuracy in the standards about when it was founded. I know the correct addition of the Sikhism will go a long way for the Sikh students in Michigan to feel included and better understood. For example, our boys did presentation in their classes, elementary as well as the middle school about our religion. It helped them tremendously because of their classmates and teachers better understood our identity. It helped to reduce the bullying. My sons' experience are a prime example as to why teaching about the all religions and communities in academic setting will help reduce bullying. I ask on behalf of community is that these standards pass with amendments made to the W3.2 in passing of the standards. I'll, I'll provide the copy of the suggested edits and the copy of the statement for your record. Thank you.
Michael Libby is the next speaker, followed by Cindy Holland.
My name is Michael Libby. I'm co-ordinator of the Michigan Geographic Alliance and chair of many of the committees in the standards, especially with respect to world history and geography. I would like to describe the roles I and my fellow social studies educators played in the process and how our roles were different from some of the roles played by other people. As social studies educators, developing standards to guide curriculum development and assessment in a local-controlled state, we have to undertake our task with several criteria. Are the standards appropriate for students and an effective guide for teachers? Are they academically valid, nonpartisan, and unbiased? Are they consistent with the rule of law and well-established political and educational norms? Democracy can be legitimately defined as any government which derives its authority from the consent of the governed. We can also refer legitimately to the structure of our government as a constitutional republic. Both are academically valid. And last, are, are what we do consistent with the charges given to the committee by the Michigan Department of Education and the State Board of Education? Outside observers or participants are not bound by the charges given to our committees. For example, our initial charge was to make an update and revision in light of the publication of the C-3 document. Some educators believe we should follow the example of other states and make a wholesale adoption of the C-3 document. Wasn't our charge. Our charge has been to create fewer higher standards for use in a local-controlled state than we have. Some want our standards to include much more specific examples or become more like a curriculum. Religion is always controversial. It is our job to develop standards for history and geography curriculum, not a religious curriculum. This is one area where we appreciate the importance of local control. In the last round of public input, the Sikh community has lobbied effectively, politely, and articulately about how their religion should be presented. Task board made significant changes as a result. We read their materials, but left much about all religions as a local control issue. We have gone through three cycles of public commentary, significant input from a large group of politicians, reviewed by the bias committee. Three separate sets of social studies educators and others have worked through the standards. In each case, our charge from MDE was to respond appropriately to a new set of input and justify our decisions. In each case, significant changes were made. In each case, not all of the input was accepted or was accepted and modified. After a very long engagement, it is time we tied the knot and finished up this standards process. Thank you.
Cindy Holland is next, followed by Shane Treehull.
Hi, my name is Cindy Holland. I'm here as a concerned parent. I have four children in the public school system and I, I have several concerns about the proposed standards.
A little louder.
My name is Cindy Holland. I'm here as a concerned parent. I, I have four children in this public school system and I have a couple of concerns about the proposed standards. I, I think that the, the main concern I have is that the public, that the proposed standards are contradicting the core values of many Christian families. And so a lot of us have an issue with that. I'm, I'm here actually to represent a lot of the people in my community as well. And I'm just asking that you vote no on this proposed standards. And I'm just too nervous to even go on anymore. So I thank you for your time. I ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Shane Treehull is next. Okay. Joellen Pizaric is next, followed by Mohan Singh Moltani.
Hi, thank you. I'm Joellen Pizaric and I'm a former teacher. I was educated at Michigan State. I have a dual major in child development and elementary ed. So I took courses in both the education side and the human ecology side. One of the most important criteria for me as an educator is that children's basic needs are met first and foremost, sort of along the lines of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Since 1965, we've gone through a number of what I would call federally and state-mandated conformity-based education programs. We have Lyndon Johnson's program. We have Bush's No Child Left Behind, Obama's Race to the Top, Common Core, and now the Common Core-aligned piggyback program, the C-3 framework. A number of well-known educators have taken a look in 2018 at these kinds of conformity-based programs and done an assessment of their outcomes, their advantages, their costs, and whether or not they produce an actual return on investment. Since the seventies, inflation-adjusted per pupil spending has more than doubled in the United States. The average state has seen a 3% decline in math and verbal scores and a 120% increase in real spending per child. During that same period, when declining spending occurred, results did not diminish or decrease. So there doesn't seem to be a correlation between the amount of money spent on these programs and the results. At the same time that this has gone on, conformity-based programs have fundamentally changed the environment of our classrooms and created a hostile culture for children to learn in. With anxiety and excessive testing, it's, it impacts parents and children. In many cases, when parents have gone to schools to contest these, these types of programs, they're met with resistance, ridicule, being ostracized by teachers and administrators. I've heard many parents comment on this. Based on their religious or political beliefs, they feel unwelcome in the school. People are leaving our schools in droves because of it. There's a number of undeniable harms that are being caused to children. We're seeing a demonstrable correlation between developmentally inappropriate school environments and intensifying emotional instability and mental health issues with our children. We're seeing mood and anxiety, panic disorders, phobias, eating disorders, self-harming behavior, suicide, attempted suicide, violence, and a host of other disorders. As of 2017, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry said that suicide was the second-leading cause of death for young people between the age of three and twenty-four. The CDC reported that 7.4% of youths in grades nine through twelve had reported at least one suicide attempt in the last twelve months. Lengthening school days.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we've got to stick to the time limits.
Thank you for your time. I have handouts for everybody, covered this and a whole host of other issues related to these, to this program. And I think we're seeing a canary in the coal mine in our schools and I'd like to address that before it's too late. So, there's some handouts.
Mohan Singh Moltani is next and Kathleen Kubik follows Mohan.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mohan Singh Moltani. I'm from Lansing. I'm a Sikh community member. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on the proposed Michigan K-12 social studies standards. I have lived in Michigan for, for the past twenty-four years and have been part of the public school system with my children, both going through public schools here in Michigan in Grand Ledge. I'm a member of Sikh community. The Sikh religion is the fifth-largest religion in the world and I am proud that Sikhs have been part of Michigan's community for many decades. As you can see, Sikhs from across the state have come here because they deeply care about these standards and want to be accurately included. In addition, over four hundred others from Michigan's Sikh community have participated in the online public comment period. So many of us felt that it was important to come here today because even though we are the world's fifth-largest religion, many people are still uneducated about the community and the faith. Sikhs children also face a lot of bullying and difficulty in schools. I alongside my fellow community members want the standard to pass. Our ask is that corrections are, that corrections are made to W3.2 when they are passed on, passed to make Michigan's standard inclusive and accurate of all the community it represents. I can provide a copy of suggested edits and a copy of this statement for the record. Thank you so much for listening to me and God bless you all.
Kathleen Kubik is next, followed by Dr. Iman D. Kar Graywall.
I always come to these things and say, "I'll never speak to you," but I speak. I was in the school system working for twenty-six years and I have seen things, so many changes that I don't like. I was in special ed and I would go into the social studies classrooms. I would see all kinds of things and it just deteriorated to me. I see, I have seen great teachers and great teachers had the ability to go beyond what they were supposed to, or they weren't told as much as they are now. You're telling the teachers what to do. And I, I just see that they're not the joy, there's no joy in the classrooms like there used to be. Maybe I'm wrong. I saw it from my perspective. I worked in Wild Lake Schools and I see how, I, I believe that everybody should know about other religions, yes, and not condemn anyone. But as a Christian, we are being pushed aside. But I, I just can't tell you enough about change, the, the change. And in the school- But I just can't tell you enough about change, the change in the school system, and I hope you vote no on this and try again. I know it would take hours and hours and days and days, but to add something more, to give a teacher more ability to be flexible. They used to be, you could always see a great teacher, and that's what the classrooms need. In Wall Lake, we just gave them lots of money to build more schools with less students in it, and it's like, but where can you find the great teachers? I have a granddaughter that wants to be one, and I've discouraged her to be it, but she's still going to go forward and try to be a teacher. But this, what you have in this, I don't like. Thank you for listening to me. I wasn't very good talking, but I have to say thank you.
Dr. Iman Deeb Kohr-Greywall, followed by Tammy Carloni.
My deep respect for pronouncing my name so accurately.
Thank you.
So accurately. Such a pleasure. So my name is Dr. Iman Deeb Kohr-Greywall. I have been a resident of Michigan for the past 30 years and came as an international student to Eastern Michigan University. I'm a parent of two boys, one son who has graduated the Ann Arbor Public Schools and the other who is a junior at Skyline High School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on the proposed Michigan K-12 social study standards. In my professional capacity as faculty in the Department of Teacher Education at Eastern Michigan University, who has held the John W. Porter Distinguished Chair in Urban Education, I have been responsible for preparing thousands of students to teach in the K-12 schools over the past 20-plus years. It is my firm belief that standards should be informative, inclusive, comprehensive, and accurate in order to teach about diverse communities and prepare students for the globalized world in which we now live. As an educator, I understand that a lot of hard work has gone into revising these standards. It is not an easy undertaking. I commend the task force for the progress made. These standards are a step in the right direction, and it is clear that the common goal is to create a status, a set of standards that encourage inclusivity and civic engagement. I want the standards to pass and hope to count on your vote. As a Sikh woman, my ask alongside my fellow community members is for the requested edits to be made to W.3.2, Growth and Development of World Standards, of World Religions in Passing of the Standards. I really appreciate your time and attention, and thank you very much.
Tammy Carloni is next, followed by Stephen Rockman.
Representing a group today?
So you want 10 minutes, do you want to take advantage of the 10 minutes?
Please, thank you.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Tammy Carlon, and I am the 2018 State Board of Education nominee that was the top vote getter when the 82 counties were added together on Election Day. The next day, Wayne County came in and bumped me out, but that does not take away from the importance of what I'm going to tell you today. My message against the failed Common Core and these proposed social study standards was extremely well-received all over Michigan, and I speak for millions of Michiganders. I have been an education advocate for 20 years and have researched and fought these standards for five years. Upon reading the most recent set of these standards, it is clear to anybody interested in academic and intellectual integrity that we must not pass them. They are extremely politically biased. As Linda Forward admitted, what is in the examples is what will be tested by the state. That makes these standards more of a curriculum, thence a set of standards. These standards are lacking critical pieces of history that our students should know. Pushing an agenda on our children instead of providing them with an excellent education based in truth is not what our tax dollars are for, nor what we trust our schools to do with our children. This is educational malpractice, and if passed, more and more students will flood out of our public schools. Michigan schools already rank very low in our nation. Every year, more and more money is provided, and every year, results go down. Money is great. I'm a fan of using as much money as possible, but we must have an ROI, return on investment. So far, the Michigan Department of Education has not provided me with the cost at the state and district level to implement these standards. This is unacceptable for Michigan's hard-working taxpayers. The proposed social study standards are Common Core-aligned. Common Core is a big part of the problem. The math and ELA components were adopted in Michigan on June 2, 2010, and results have gone down every year since. Nine years is a huge part of a K-12 education, of which every child only gets one chance. We must get our schools back to using proven, effective educational methods and back to truth and excellence in teaching academics. Please refer to House Bill 4192 from 2018 for what would accomplish that. You may have heard Governor DeSantis of Florida has committed to getting rid of Common Core. I'll submit with his, with my statement, the three-page recommendation document that was prepared for him on how to get it done. The social study standards being considered by the State Board of Ed are not only Common Core-aligned, but also fundamentally flawed in design. The Florida recommendations point out that both Common Core math and ELA standards are fundamentally flawed. Conversations about the details of the standards lose sight of this basic and critical consideration, which is why I have opposed this effort to tweak the wording in the social study standards like Democracy versus Republic. The social study standards have three critical structural flaws. The overarching arc of inquiry starts with inquiries, questions, not facts. Facts are learned only based on the inquiry. There is no overarching drive to ensure all important facts of history, geography, and civics are covered. The arc of inquiry goal is to create political activists, not well-informed citizens. The seven dimensions of bias in educational curriculum is a screening tool used to guide what is included as examples. It suggests every race, religion, gender, et cetera, but be equally represented in the curriculum. This is problematic to developing a clear understanding of history, geography, and civics. Of course, accuracy of facts is relevant, but as you can see, even if facts and terminology are presented accurately, the foundational flaws are not corrected as a result. I included this report from Florida for those of you that are interested in actually improving education and Michigan becoming top 10 in 10. I would strongly encourage you to listen to real, proven educators, not special interests or people that have been part of the problem. Independent studies show the majority of people from all parties, including teachers, do not approve of Common Core. I know a lot of concerned citizens, parents, teachers, et cetera, flooding your board members with emails saying no to these standards. Many people could not get to the Listen and Learn sessions and, of course, could not be here today because they work or teach. I do not know, I do know the one that I went to, the Listen and Learn in Oakland County had about 95% of a big audience saying no. I have it all on video for those of you that are interested. Many people felt the survey was made in an unacceptable way to silence their voices. Judge Warren was part of the process, and his write-up in itself made it very clear that these standards should not pass. If you haven't read it, I recommend it. Part of why these standards are fatally flawed at the foundation is due to their internationally-derived C-3 framework, stated goals of which are to use teachers as change agents, to push social justice, and to turn our students into liberal activists. Nothing about teaching proper American history and the like. I have an article link with proof of what I'm talking about here in my statement. You'll notice the title of the group in the link, Journal of International Social Studies, the official publication of the International Assembly of the National Council for Social Studies, NCSS for short. That is who's behind the C-3 framework that these standards are built on. We are a local-control state, and the Michigan Department of Education is selling these standards as local control. If this is local control, why would we need that group? Regarding the C-3 social studies framework, the proven standards are built on, the proposed standards are built on, Chester Finn nails it in this excellent article. I've included a link in my statement. He's a president emeritus of Fordham Institute, nonpartisan group. This is a quote from, from the article. "Sure, one could build good stuff on this framework, but one could also build trash or nothing at all." Please see the article for what he means. "It also has components to it that will only be successful if other people do things that they are highly unlikely to do. It is a recipe for disaster that I have seen over and over and over in government. Nice idea, some may say, but it is not going to work. It must not happen, it will not happen as intended, and the sales pitch is a lie just like Common Core. We must use proven methods, and we must teach our students proper history. Our students must fully learn and understand the documents our country was founded on." Where they are covered in the standards, they are twisted and not accurate oftentimes. Again, refer to Judge Warren's article for details. "A major goal of C-3 is to create little activists in every child. Sounds good to some unless you really think about this. Let's say half the kids are from conservative families. That means half the kids are going to be forced to do activism against their beliefs. There are children from conservative and Christian families in our schools, and those children are being discriminated against strongly." Now, here's an example. Think about the walkout against guns in our schools across the nation that happened not too long ago, an effort using our children as propaganda pawns. If you were a child that did not hold the anti-gun view and you wanted to stay inside, many were told they could not due to lack of supervision. Many were ridiculed for their stance, which became obvious. Many went with the crowd against their beliefs. Can you imagine pro-life children being bullied into taking part in a pro-choice walkout? Our kids should not be put into these situations in school. It is simply not right and creates a hostile and unsafe environment for them. There are also behavioral science aspects of the building of C-3 and psychological components of push, which helps them in pushing their agenda. Absolutely unacceptable. Another astonishing point about these social study standards, in the original Michigan Department of Education Listen and Learn sessions, we've been doing this a long time. The MDE was bragging about the input and approval by the Southern Poverty Law Center. I have a picture of the slide for anybody that wants to see it. They don't use the slide anymore for obvious reasons. Southern Poverty Law Center is a hate group that creates division in our country. They hate conservatives and are in a lot of trouble with the law right now for several reasons. The MDE, of course, is no longer bragging about it, but the fact remains. Many other radical leftist groups had input on these standards, yet two conservative guys had input, and the left railed on them for months publicly. Most teachers literally screaming at last year's hearing event at Oakland schools, "We are a democracy, not a republic," and that error is constantly repeated in these standards. And they said, "A white, Christian, cisgender male should have no input on social studies," referring to Senator Pat Colbeck, who represented at the time a lot of people. All people matter. The bias is so clear, and the foundational flaws are deep. We need to take our schools back to truth and excellence in education now. We should pass last year's HB 4192 to give Michigan students the proven best in nation instead of continuing down this failing path. I find the proposed social study standards completely unacceptable in content and bias, and I'm asking you to vote no on them. Many people here today have said, basically, they want these passed so diversity education takes place. We can teach diversity, I'm a fan of it as well, without passing these flawed standards. Thank you.
The next speaker is, the next, the next speaker is Stephen Rockman, followed by Janet Rechtinwald.
My name is Stephen Rockman. I'm a parent. I urge the board to vote no on the standards. First, the standards are nothing more than a political pamphlet. The standards and examples promote a progressive ideology that further reinforce the agenda. Each lesson is an opportunity for students to practice political activism. Second, for a piece that claims to promote civics, the standards are devoid of any sense of civic pride about being an American citizen. It presents our nation as nothing more than one among many nations in the global community whose history is one of oppression, and that the heroes of American society are progressives and conservatives are nothing more than a fringe movement. Third, they completely misrepresent our form of government to promote the social justice, democratic values narrative. The United States is a republic, not a democracy. This is clear from the Constitution, the Federalist Papers, the writings and debates of the founding fathers, and the Pledge of Allegiance. However, the standards repeatedly identify the United States as a constitutional democracy, American democracy, democratic society, or democratic citizenship. And again, it's all political. It's an effort to confuse children about their form of government in order to lead them down the path of a living constitution. This living constitution designed is illustrated by the revisionist description of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence through incorporation of the social justice democratic values. Promotes the narrative that the Constitution is a living document to be regularly altered to suit the latest notion of democratic values. This has no foundation in the Constitution or the Declaration of Independence. First, the United States Constitution is the supreme law of the land. Want to change it, you have to amend it, not run to the federal court. Second, the Declaration of Independence is not a statement of social justice democratic values, but a statement of natural rights. Even more troubling is the discussion of right to remedy. In this regard, the standards assert, "We are, we the people have the right to, one, alter the government to create a more perfect union and/or abolish a tyrannical government institute and new government laying its foundations on democratic values." Notably, a constitution itself is the foundation for the more perfect union, and nowhere does it assert the remedy of its own abolition. Furthermore, nowhere in the Declaration of Independence does it declare, abolish a tyrannical government institute and new government laying its foundation on democratic values. Rather, it specifically states, "Alter, abolish any form of government becomes destructive to the ends of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness to affect their safety and happiness and provide new guards for their future security." As to values, it's clear from the Declaration of Independence that its core values that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, and we use our life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In other words, the Declaration of Independence is founded on the values that our rights come from God, not from governments. That the center of our lives is not government, but God, family, and community. That makes the United States of America exceptional. It's disturbing that the social study standards do not teach this truth. In my opinion, it's educational malpractice.
Janet Rechtinwald is next, followed by Carly Hammond.
I'm Jan Rechtinwald, and I'm an educator, and I'm very concerned about my grandchildren. I agree with everything the last two people said. I don't have to even tell you what I plan to say because they covered it all. Just vote no on this. Please vote no on this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carly Hammond, followed by Manit Paul Singh.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carly Hammond. I am from Saginaw, Michigan, and I'm really happy to see a lot of people here who really care and are really passionate about their education, their communities, and their school districts. There is one school district currently fighting for its very existence right now, and that would be in Benton Harbor. They are on the precipice of a school closure, and I am speaking today in opposition of that stance and in opposition of school closures as a way of remediating our education system. In Saginaw, and from doing work in Flint, I've seen tons of graveyards of closed schools. They are blights on the community. They are a symbol of oppression and racism in the structures that have kept Black and Brown communities down and keep them down to this day. We ask our teachers to solve poverty, which is an impossible task when the resources are constantly stripped away from them from a deprioritization of education in our budgets. We punish schools when they struggle to overcome the hurdles that decades of failed policy, redlining, and oppression have caused. Closing a school fractures a community, and it tells its students and young people that they are not worth saving. In these punishments, these closures are not doled out equally. They disproportionately affect Black and Brown communities and function as an attack on their history and culture. And as an example of that are demonstrated in the name changes of certain Detroit schools from the emergency managers. Dr. Ethelene Crockett was a Detroit icon and was the first African-American board-certified OBGYN. She had a school that was named after her. However, the emergency manager changed its name to Ben Carson Academy. Finney High School was named after abolitionist Jared Finney, which was renamed East English Village Academy by the emergency manager. Barbara Jordan Elementary School, named after the Black Congresswoman, was renamed Palmer Park Academy by the emergency manager, and it's not hard to see the intent of these decisions. I would ask that the board and its members take a strong stance against school closures and recognize the damaging effect that closing school has on its community. And I would ask the board and its members take a strong, take a strong stance against racism and unequal treatment between zip code and zip code and school district to school district. And I would ask that everybody else here today who is speaking out with passion for their schools, for their young people, for their educational systems, to also contact the office of the governor and contact your local representatives as well, and say that you and your community stands with Benton Harbor schools and stands against school closure as a policy. We cannot have it be a policy to abandon our schools, an abandonment... We cannot have it be a policy to abandon our schools and abandon our students. Our schools are not a business and our students are not a commodity. And they shouldn't be paying for bad decisions and bad policy from politicians who were there for years before they could ever have been even thought of. So thank you for your time today.
Our next speaker is Managed Paul Singh, followed by Melanie Curtis. Okay. Thank you for telling me that. Melanie Curtis is next, followed by Amy Bloom.
Hi, I'm Melanie Curtis. I'm a member of the leadership team of the U.S. Parents Involved in Education. I was also a school board member. I know many of you. I know you have a really tough job today. You have a bigger responsibility than those of us who are on local school boards because you're setting policy for all children. So while it's obvious you put a lot of work into this day of standards to review, clearly the standards are still considered politically biased. I believe it is because, as Tammy said, there's a foundational flaw in the arc of inquiry that overrules the entire design. It's put subservient to the arc of inquiry over learning history, geography, and civics. Quite honestly, I don't think kids learning history, geography, and civics under these standards will be qualified to win millions of dollars on Jeopardy. It's sad because they should be able to learn. They're experimental. The standards are an experiment. We know of standards similar that we're called to call on deeper learning, but those were common core math and ELA standards, which are failing. A federal report has said they're failing our students. Just in Michigan, too. In 2007, 75% of our third graders were reading at grade level, 75%. At that time, I was disappointed in that number. Now we're at 44%. A lot of the reason our education system is failing is a continuous experiment, one after the other. And this is another one. We need to return to best practices, to proven practices, to things that we worked in the past. We can do this. I believe the Michigan Department of Education can do a better job, and I hope you will ask them to do so. Vote no on these standards and start over. Thank you.
Amy Bloom is the next speaker, followed by Dr. Mark Kromen.
I have copies of my statements. State Board of Education and Superintendent Ailes, I come here today as an attorney with experience in state and federal government, an educator including almost two decades as the social studies consultant at Oakland Schools, over a decade on the board for the Center for the Study of Citizenship at Wayne State University, and a researcher for USC Shoah Foundation, and as a lifelong advocate of public education. Simply put, my work has been educating for democracy. It's been my life's work. The contents of the 2019 proposed social study standards will have an impact for the next decade of learning for students in the K-12 system. To be silent is to be complicit. It's my civic responsibility to speak. I think we all can agree that our children deserve well-rounded, accurate social study standards that will prepare them for college, career, and civic life. I think we all can agree that our democracy is being challenged in new and profound ways. Alexis Tokville noted that "Without common ideas, there is no common action, and without common action, men still exist, but a social body does not." Thus, in order for there to be a society and all the more that this society prosper, it is necessary that all the minds of the citizens always be brought together and held together by some principal ideas. Every Michigan teaching certificate indicates that the primary purpose of public education is to educate for democracy. While Americans can hold their elected officials accountable for their decisions through voting, that is not the only way our system of democracy works. Democracy means building the types of communities we want to live in. It's about people advocating and developing agency, a sense of belonging, and a calling to a purpose beyond ourselves. It's about building the nation we want to live in, of the people, by the people, and for the people. These standards do not provide clarity as to those principal ideas or guide teachers in the development of the skills necessary for self-government. Rather, they are a litany of disconnected and alternative facts that wholly miss the mark. If we know better, we should do better. I've been involved in this process at various stages over the past four-plus years. Last month, I sent a letter to some board members indicating 11 distinct problems with the standards and provided examples of each. Some of these examples have been changed, and I'm thrilled. But let me be clear, I did not provide a comprehensive review or a comprehensive list of errors. Many more of the examples of the problems I identified still exist in the proposed draft. I'd like to highlight a few. Significant constitutional understandings have been lost, the Contract Clause, Supremacy Clause, Necessary and Proper Clause. I know I'm running out of time. The document that you're about to adopt has three distinct frames. It has skills and processes, it has content standards, and it has the C-3 framework. There has been no attempt to integrate the three. There's a lack of transparency about the scope of the changes, and our standards lack the idea that those in positions of authority also have responsibilities.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I just finish up? I'm asking you to uphold your responsibilities as duly elected members of the State Board of Education and act in the best interest of children. I'm asking you to uphold your oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States. You can do this by sending it out for an external review.
Our next speaker is Andy Schm... Angie Schm... I'm sorry, Dr. Mark Kromen, followed by Angie Schmucker, who I believe is here with the group. So Dr. Mark Kromen is next.
Hi, I'm Mark Kromen. I'm a professor of history at Wayne State University, and I was a member of the committee that wrote the 2007 standards. It was great honor to work with the scholars and teachers who developed the standards in 2007. I do not believe that any of the changes made since then are politically motivated. I believe that those who have sought to improve the standards have only the best interests of our children, and in my case, my grandchildren, in mind. My fourth-grade granddaughter takes great joy in being in public school. But having said that, it makes it especially difficult for me to oppose the changes for several reasons. First, although the history, American history section, my area of specialization, which would be fifth, eighth, and grade in high school, U.S. history, the changes that have been made are often quite slight, but they actually add confusion rather than clarity to them. I can provide examples. I'll just read very, very briefly. The old standards describe how Africans living in North America drew upon their African past and adapted elements of new cultures to develop a distinct African-American culture. The new one described how enslaved and free Africans struggled to retain elements of their diverse histories and cultures to develop distinct African-American identities. It's a lack of clarity that gets, not intended to change anything, but which makes it actually much more difficult to follow. Second point, the seventh-grade curriculum, which I was not at all involved with, is simply confusing. It is almost impossible to follow. The temporal part separated from the geographical, to me, makes no intellectual sense, and the temporal part itself is confusing and inaccurate. Third, when it comes to the U.S. high school curriculum, basically, the committee stopped where we stopped in 2007 and did not take this story further into the decades since. So what we have is the 2007 standards slightly revised. I do think these additional examples are a major benefit, by the way. Thank you.
Angie Schmucker and group. Were you wanting to take advantage of the 10-minute time limit?
Yes. Thank you. Hi, I'm Angie Schmucker, and first I want to say thank you to everybody for your incredible patience today. It's, I'm sure, a very long afternoon for all of you. I'm the chief development officer at Cornerstone Education Group. I've been here nine months. We operate four K-through-eight schools and one high school currently. Four are located in Detroit and one's in Redford. We currently serve 3,500 children, primarily from the city of Detroit and primarily living in poverty. Last fall, we had a waiting list of 780 students. 400 were for our high school alone. This past spring, we applied for an expansion grant through the MDE/CSP application process to add a high school to our Lincoln King Academy located on Grove Street in Detroit. I'm joined today by a few teachers from Lincoln King Academy, parents, grandparents, and our chief academic officer. And I'm going to hand it over to our chief academic officer.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ernestine Sanders, and it's a privilege to be here and to speak with you about Lincoln King Academy. I had the privilege of working with Lincoln King Academy with real detail two years ago, and what I saw was a dedicated staff, engaged parent group, who have worked very, very hard for the young people and the children at that school. And as Ms. Schmucker said, that we serve a group of students who come with quite a few things that they need in terms of helping them to be proficient in all areas. And what I'm very pleased to report is that the work they have done has made a measurable difference. So I would encourage you to look at our grant very favorably. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erlene Power, and I represent the grandparents. I moved to Michigan 36 years ago at the age of 31, so I'm familiar with all of the charter schools, public schools, private schools. And my granddaughter now, she was attending a Detroit public school, and it seriously failed her. And I transferred her to Cornerstone, and she's made tremendous progress. She's gone from an F to a B in math alone. I'd have to say that it operates more like a family. Everybody's involved, the parents, the teachers, you know, from the top on down. And I urge you, I saw something on TV this morning, I'm trying to make this fast. It was about a little boy that was nonverbal, had nonverbal autism, and he spoke for the first time singing "Old Town," you know, "I'm taking my old town road, I'm gonna ride this horse until I can't ride anymore." But anyway, this boy spoke for the first time. And another commercial, like, "Orange vanilla, orange vanilla, charter school, public school, charter school, public school. All I want is the best." And if Cornerstone and their schools represent the best education for the students in the neighborhood, and the money is not coming from Michigan, then I think you should support it. That's all I have to say.
My name is Crystal Nathaniel. I'm a parent of a student at Lincoln King Academy. We have been a part of the Lincoln King family since first grade. My son is now in eighth grade, and he has been an honored student since he has been at Lincoln King Academy, and that's due to the parent and teacher involvement. We are a family, as she stated before me, that it is a family and they care about our students' enrichment. Kenneth is very excited. He wants the high school. I want the high school because it's continuing his education with Lincoln King. He's been there since first grade. We want him to be there through 12th grade and be able to excel the way he has been excelling from first through eighth grade in math, reading, his test scores. He has been, have been awesome in every area, and that's due to the staff. I'm also a PTO, on the PTO committee, so I'm a very involved parent with him. So I see the interaction with the parents and the staff, and they have nothing but our students in their best interest, and we would love this high school to make room for the ones that are on the waiting list, to give them that same opportunity that Kenneth has.
Hello, I am Karen Tillman. I am the Student Services Coordinator, as well as the Enrollment Specialist, and I just want to share with you that they are beating our doors down to come to our schools. We have a waitlist, as was previously mentioned, that's very long. Just this year alone, after retention, we still have 102 people on our waitlist. We're doing something right, and we want the opportunity to continue to grow. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Onisha Bassett. I am a teacher. I'm speaking as from a teacher and parent. I have two children that go to Lincoln King Academy. I want to speak on behalf of my leadership. They do a very good job at providing teachers with instructional resources to support learning inside the classroom and outside the classroom. We have made great strides, taken M-Step, PSATs, and we have our own in-house assessments as well, as I just already, that monitor student growth in reading and math. And I just want to say that my daughters have grown two academic grade levels in one academic school year. One I have that's in the seventh grade and one that is in the eighth grade. The eighth grader grew two grade levels in one academic school year in math, and my daughter has, that's in the seventh grade, grew two grade levels in English in one academic school year. So I just want to say thank you, and please help us to continue to help them thrive and become college-ready and invest in our school. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time. Good afternoon. I am Nicholas Brier. I am an eighth-grade teacher at Lincoln King Academy, graduated Michigan State in 2015, and I've been with Lincoln King ever since. I stumbled upon them, just looking for a job, needed a classroom to teach in, and I found one at Lincoln King. I wasn't thinking public, wasn't thinking charter, I was thinking, who can I teach? I got to find a bunch of students there who are looking to be taught. I've stuck around with Cornerstone because they have the right vision. I believe in their vision, and I see it every day. Not saying it's perfect, and we've grown a lot. When I started there, we were in a priority school. We have grown out of priority at Lincoln King Academy, and we continue to grow in every subject. As I've noticed, if you walk into our school, please come check it out sometime, we are very culture-oriented on becoming the best. That is our goal, and we have character traits that are all over our school, 12 character traits, one for each month, of love, passion, you know, gratitude, thankfulness, and it's all over the school. We have all these positive things. It's a very positive environment, and that's why I keep coming back to Lincoln King, and that's why I believe in Lincoln King. I'd like to also state that, you know, regardless if you are a charter, pro-charter or not, the facts are, you know, the highest SAT scores in Detroit for open enrollment schools, all 10 of them are charter schools. The 10th-highest average SAT score is our own high school, Health Tech and High. I believe when we expand Lincoln King Academy, I think we can add a second school onto that top 10 list. That is our goal. I believe in our principle and our vision, and that's why I keep trying to recruit more students to come to our school. We've got 676 kids in that school right now, and they're just looking to be taught and looking for opportunity and resources. Every year, we're growing and growing more. I can proudly say that Lincoln King Academy was rated number one in Detroit for growth in percentage points for proficiency in mathematics between 2016 and 2018. We grew the most. We grew double-digit percentage proficiency points in two years, and no other school in the city can say that. So we are doing something right, as the others have mentioned prior, and I hope you take our school into consideration. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Doreen Weisberg, followed by Cheryl Picard. Our next speaker is Doreen Weisberg, followed by Cheryl Picard.
Hello, my name is Doreen Weisberg. I am the co-president and co-founder of the Michigan Jewish Action Council, and we advocate for public policies that are based upon America's founding principles and traditional Jewish thought. With regard to the 2019 social studies standards, we find that the standards are not consistent with our founding principles and traditional Jewish thought. I endorse the statement of Judge Warren, Tammy Carlon, Melanie Curtis. I agree that we are going in the wrong direction and actually think that the board should feel so much shamed face at the lowering of our output of our students over these many past years. It should stop and analyze what were we once doing correct that we are not doing correctly anymore. And if you think that voting yes on these standards will get us in a new direction, instead of continuing along the direction that we've been going now, I think you're making a big mistake. We should learn from what other schools, not schools, other states are doing, those that are improving as opposed to what we're doing here. So I also, I want to say, I know you're sitting here being both commended and condemned. I'm a little bit coming out on the condemned side, sorry. I want to commend the Sikh community for coming out in such large numbers to be able to stand for your community and the community's needs. I'm sorry to see that you've attached your amendment to such poor standards, and I hope that you will think about reintroducing your amendment if, God willing, you will vote no on these standards. Thank you.
Cheryl Picard is next, followed by Maya Sudragat.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Picard, and I've been a resident of Michigan all my life, and I had four children that went through the public school system, and they have all graduated. And I'm just here because I saw a lot of changes. My first daughter was born in 1987 and had been through the whole school system, social studies and all. Anytime I had a problem, it was usually related to social studies and just, and I understand that different teachers can teach different things, so there's a lot of fluctuation, but there was a lot of an agenda. But one of the things I've noticed, just recently looking at this as being aware of, which I had more time to have looked over everything, but by just so quickly looking over things, I found and have seen through the years the lack of what the Declaration of Independence stands for. I see a lot of times listed unenable rights, but there's nothing that says it's endowed by our Creator. And the actual, and even in the things that I printed out, you know, it's kind of clumped in with justice and general welfare, which is common good, is stated now, which is really general welfare, according to our documents. But, but what, when you start putting that all clumped in, the purpose of the government is to protect these rights, unenable rights that are endowed by our Creator. The other things, the Constitution is, is set up for, is speaking for the reasons for adopting the different things like establish justice, form of perfect union, ensure domestic tranquility, common defense. All those are listed as to support the Constitution. The Constitution is established as a way of protecting our unenable rights. It's not, it gets put into all the same level, which is very confusing, starting out at a very young age. I also want to point out too that when we're doing that with the Common Core education, there is a difference with who's the authority on all that. Because if we can just allow the government to determine what our rights are, then we run into a lot of problems of anybody can change that, and then our rights will be changed. So if we don't recognize that as our purpose of our government, then all these other things can be changed, that our rights can actually be changed. And I wanted to point out that a lot of the Common Core things comes from the UN, and it's established in correlation with the UN standards. But every document, the documents I've got, Universal Declaration of Human Rights, if you look at the Article 29, Number 3, all their documents have this little clause in there that says, "These rights and freedoms may in no case be exercised contrary to the purposes and principles of the United Nations." So when you go to their, all their little things of tolerance and all these things, they list all this wonderful sounding great things, but you have to remember it's all under their decision. But if we go to the Creator as far as recognizing our rights, those rights are definite, can't be changed, then we don't have, that's the security in why we have a government. That's why they need the government. That's why people chose to give their lives for it. So.
Sorry, I have to be the taskmaster on time. Everybody wants an opportunity. So the next speaker is Maya Sudragat, and David Early is following her.
Thank you very much. It's very nice meeting all of you. My name is Maya Sudrajat. I'm coming from Plymouth Canton School. I have two children there. Originally, I came and I grew up from Indonesia. It's one of the biggest Muslim countries, mostly populated. And I came here for justice, for equality, and for the freedom. And I really appreciate with all the comments from the Sikh community and from all the others, recognizing the importance of diversity. I really appreciate the focus for the diversity in the social study. However, one thing that I want to really ask your attention and focus is to still continue to advocate for the excellence and truth like Tammy Carlon had already mentioned, especially in the fact of Christianity. When I started with my high school student last year to read the curriculum for the, for the social study and read together the textbook that he is using in the world history, I'm very, I'm very sad to see how Christianity is explained in addition to the other bias that is coming from other different facts and religions. So in accordance to your new standard, the 412, the importance of the world religions and the interaction of the world trade networks, contacts between all different faiths, I'm really asking that you review the contents of the textbook, not just the curriculum, but also the facts, in the textbook that is used in all the high school in Michigan. There are several cases, for example, that shows the bias that I heard from other different school districts, but specifically for Plymouth Canton, one textbook that they use is "The Earth and Its People: A Global History." And this is written by Richard Bullitt, Pamela Crossley, Hedrick Stephen Hirsch, and Johnson. And this book is really posing the bias against Christianity and Judaism and favoritism towards the Islam for two reasons. One, the section of Israel and the rise of Christianity are written with the views from people outside of the faith, not including the facts from the Bibles or from the Torah. And this is clearly discrimination against Christians and Jews. Many Christians are offended by the information. The other point of this is, out of the six writers of the book, five of them are the experts in the religions and in the culture, but one is specialized in the faith, and that faith is Islam. Why do we want to take a book that is written by one expert in one religion and try to explain all different religions with his views? The examples of this book is very aggravating. So for example, the book mentioned about Abraham, and in the Christianity part, it also puts in the bracket, "If he were a real person." And then later in the faith of Islam, it says, "Abraham, the big builder of Kaba." Why do we put such statements in all explanation of the faith? I came here because of the education in America. All of the nations recognize the great of American education. And I'm really hoping that we can continue to make this for our next generations, especially I trust in the public schools. And the more excellence that we can put, the more funding we can trustfully give to the public schools. Thank you very much for listening to me.
David Early is the next speaker, followed by Sylvia Rodea. David Early? Is Sylvia Rodea here? She will be followed by Sandra Betten.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Rodey and I'm from West Michigan. Our community has recently experienced divisive materials being brought into our schools which are not aligned with the beliefs of many in our community. The social studies standards, if approved, would bring even more divisive and politically charged materials without inclusion of important and accurate historical figures and foundational documents of our great nation. Numerous families in my community are already seriously considering pulling their children out of public school due to divisive materials and a growing lack of trust in the administrators who promote them, with one more family informing me of that decision yesterday. In addition, we have lost 15 administrators and teachers this year, with more looking for new positions. The social studies standards, if passed, will bring more division to our schools. If numerous families are no longer able to use our schools due to political and ideological indoctrination, it may be time to begin to defund our public schools. Michigan School Code states, "It is the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. The public schools of this state serve the needs of the pupils by cooperating with the pupil's parents and legal guardians to develop the pupil's intellectual capabilities and vocational skills in a safe and positive manner. The social studies standards are an overstep of your charge. It is not the role of the public schools to override the beliefs of parents to rewrite the history and foundation of our nation and shape the politics of the future. Our children are not political pawns." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandra Betten, followed by Gabrielle Lichavec.
Hi, I'm Sandy Betten. I'm a conservative Christian in West Michigan. I have three teenagers, and I'm asking you to vote no on these standards. Overall, these proposed social studies standards seem like they are an agenda-driven in favor of social justice and anti-American with less focus on true important details from our rich heritage. At this time in history, many parents are desperate for an unbiased edu, pardon me, unbiased education with a keen eye on what the Michigan Board of Education standards are promoting in our schools. With that keen eye, do not be surprised as more and more parents pull children from public schools if our curriculum becomes more and more left-leaning. My statement is focused on the sections devoted to the civil rights that draw a lot of attention to the LGBTQ activists. It causes me concern about the civil rights as Christians. Notably, the first civil right in the Bill of Rights is the religious liberty. Bill of Right, I'm sorry, right. However, if Christian parents and educators do not embrace these lessons, will they be ostracized as bigots and haters? Or will they be given deference and equal time to discuss biblically-based relations between the sexes? Or will the state simply impose its secular moral authority upon them? And just to further illustrate the political nature of these standards, when it comes to discussing the Bill of Rights, the Second Amendment is completely skipped over. Board members, you have a big job. We know that. You're working hard on these standards. But this is a critical time in Michigan history. Your vote today may likely affect whether parents continue to pull their kids out of public education and thereby affect public school financing. So please vote no. Thank you.
Gabrielle Lichavec is next, followed by Kathy Ingram.
Really long walk when you're out there.
You can stay in here.
Good afternoon, my name is Gabrielle Lichavec. I'm the co-coordinator of the Michigan Geographic Alliance at Central Michigan University. This role has given me a unique insight into the immense effort and professional expertise that's gone into writing these standards, but today I want to talk to you as a parent and a teacher. As a parent, it's really important to me that my child is prepared to join our society, able to discern the nuances of complex topics such as us living in a democratic republic. The United States Constitution has established us that, as that, and there's beautiful shades that accompany that, and having civil discourse around that is very important. I also appreciate the inclusivity of these standards. As both a practicing Catholic and a parent of a non-gender conforming child, I'm pleased the broad examples and emphasis on process standards prepare my child and all students to have civil discourse and to make important decisions for the future while respecting my religious rights. As an educator, I appreciate the clear guidance along with the flexibility to present curriculum in a way which is most appropriate to my local area and my students. It's time to pass these standards and turn our attention to supporting teachers in implementing them. Thank you for your time today.
Kathy Ingram is next, followed by Carolyn Kater.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ingram, and I'm retired military. I served my country for 26 years, and I did not serve my country for a socialist agenda. I didn't serve my country for democracy. I served my country for a republic. We are a constitutional republic. And every time I see on TV or hear folks talk about us being a democracy, democracy is actually mob rule. And I don't believe that our country is mob rule. Otherwise, we wouldn't have electoral colleges and things like that. And I just feel like I had to come out. I live in Luddington, Michigan, but I had to come out and say something because, as another person said, silence is complicit. And I cannot sit quietly as this kind of thing is going on. So anyway, I just want you to take into consideration, I've been stationed in Turkey. I've seen very intelligent children in Turkey, and they are, they have a hard time as far as finances go, and yet they make their kids go to school on Saturdays, you know, every day of the week nearly. And I just really think that we need to take a look and ask ourselves, the problem is not money. It's not. And I think you need to start looking at each other and trying to figure out how we can do things better, because the way that we're going right now is not the right direction. I have great nieces and nephews that are in a private school, and they're getting great education. And I have two retired teachers as parents, and so I know what teaching is all about. I know how hard it is, but we need to do this right. And so I'm asking you to vote no on these standards. And I am totally against Common Core. We need to take a look at that as well. Many people are saying they don't want it anymore. So what are we going to do about it? Thank you.
Carolyn Kater is next, followed by Rebecca Bush.
Hello, how are you? My name is Carolyn Kater. I'm a resident of Luddington, Michigan. I wasn't planning on speaking after reading the dangerous language of these new social studies standards and hearing comments on bullying. No matter what propaganda, I feel I have something of value to add as an example, because no matter what propaganda the state offers to youth, they will still thirst for truth. With a cultural geography minor, I understand the importance of teaching diversity, but it won't prevent bullying. This comes down to parents and what children observe of them. As an example, I just buried my sister two weeks ago. At the funeral mass, there were over 100 adults and children, from 37 on down to five years old, that brought roses down the aisle. Just, those are just the ones that she helped raise in our community. They called Erin Luddington's nanny. So one mother said she helped her become a better mother, and one of the boys became a priest. My point is, one single woman had a great impact on young lives, teaching them memorization of prayers, taking them to Jesus in the Adoration Chapel. She taught them love, not hate. And this is what it takes to prevent bullying, teaching love. You can teach diversity without conformity. The language in these standards is dangerous, and it takes away the individuality. I urge you to vote no and to go back to the drawing board on these social studies standards. Also, on a side note, all the children that she had reared, these children excelled and had more compassion had more compassion than any—even over the siblings—that she did not raise. And it really shows in the ones that are adults now and the ones that went through high school and I observed of them—the cliquishness that we have in our community and the ones that were able to reach out to the unfortunate. And even though they were super popular, they didn’t—it didn’t go to their head. And so it really comes down to people teaching it—it’s not always going to come from the state—the parents. They learn it from the parents and the people in their community when it comes to bullying. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Rebecca Bush.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is Rebecca Bush. I am a social studies consultant at the Ottawa Area Intermediate School District. I am an adjunct professor at Hope College. I work as a field instructor for Michigan State University, and I am currently the president of the Michigan Council for Social Studies. As a social studies educator for the last 28 years, as a mom of two, and as a wife of a local district superintendent, I would like you—to ask you—to pass these social studies standards. As president of the Michigan Council, I have heard from teachers around the state. They are overwhelmingly excited and ready to implement these standards. Why, you may be asking? Because they have faith in the standards, because they have faith in the writing process that has endured for five-plus years. They feel that the process was transparent, which is of utmost importance, as well as inclusive, drawing on a wide range of experts. It’s time to stop the bashing of those who have worked for over five years on writing these standards and listening, seeking input, time and time again, from the collective stakeholders that have much to gain by this. It’s time to stop blaming the ills of public education on these standards. As someone had previously said to you that it was an overstep of your charge, I disagree. It is not an overstep of your charge to pass these standards, and I implore you to do just that. Thank you.
That concludes public participation. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you to everyone, to all the citizens who came out today to share their comments with the State Board of Education. As Marilyn said, this concludes our section of—the session section of the board meeting dedicated to public comment. We will now continue on with our next discussion-action item, which is the approval of social studies standards. In April of 2019, the State Board of Education received a draft set of social study standards. Following the meeting, the standards were made available for a period of public comment. The standards have been revised based on that feedback, and staff today brings—bring these comments to you—the standards revised standards to you for your consideration of adoption. Following the presentation and discussion, there will be a request to approve the social studies standards. Our presenters today are Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Education, Student and School Supports, and Linda Forward, Senior Executive Policy Advisor. Welcome both of you to the State Board table.
Thank you, Superintendent Alice, and thank you to everyone who came out today to speak regarding the social studies standards. It’s very exciting to see the passion that people bring to this topic. I think that is really what we hope for as educators, is that people are passionate and informed and advocate for—for their point of view. And we appreciate as well—and you’ll hear more about this—all the comment we received over the previous public comment period, over 3,000 additional comments outside of what you heard today, in addition to the comments over the last five years. So in the spirit of, you know, how much—how much direct democracy versus representation, we’ve had lots of all of that in this process, and I think that speaks to the—just what’s exciting about how we make decisions and move forward as a state and as a country. I do have—Senator Runstedt sent letters, and I just wanted to pass them around. They just came now, so the board can choose how they consider this public comment, but I didn’t want to not share them. When Judy comes back, she can share that. Okay. So as we all remember, we came in April, and we brought you the proposed social studies standards, and since then, we have done nine additional listen-and-learn sessions in all these locations. And many of the presenters today did speak about attending the different listen-and-learn sessions. And again, we thank everybody who came out. This was our overall participation, so there were more participants—or more comment forms than attendees, sorry. We had 216 attendees at our different listen-and-learn feedback sessions, and there were over 250 comment forms. And then we, during the same time period, had the online survey opened, and we were able to receive nearly 3,000 total surveys. About 1,600 of those were completed, and then some were partially completed. And we are here today with—with the updated K-12 social studies standards based on our feedback to present them to you. The board did receive them ahead of time. They were linked to the agenda, so people hopefully had time to review them prior to this meeting. What did we learn from this last round of data collection? So we asked one question about how much of the proposed standards have you read? Just curious about how people interacted with the document. And one of our asks coming out of the previous board meeting was that people do read the actual standards, not just read what’s written about the standards. It’s easy to get into a bad game of telephone about what they actually say. So we’re excited to see that most people read either the entire document or some parts that interested them, did a brief scan is also good, but that people were actually in the standards themselves, and that’s very encouraging. We also have—in terms of the comment that we received, there were general comment—92% of them were general comment, and then 8% were specific revisions. Overall, how satisfied with the standards? So on your left, you see the percentages, and you see 43%—well, it’s even hard for me to tell by color coding—43% were satisfied or very satisfied, and the remaining were dissatisfied or no answer. And then we did remove the responses from those who identified as sick, and as you heard from the community today, they’ve come forward in support of the standards with some specific proposed revisions. So when we take those comments out, we see a different—they were very organized and submitted a lot of very good comment. So knowing that we wanted to take that into account, but also look at the data minus those specific comments, that’s what you see in the bottom right. So 54% were satisfied or very satisfied, and then 36% were dissatisfied or very satisfied. When we looked just at educators, how—what educators thought about the standards? 67%—I’m sorry, I can’t read anything today. 67% were satisfied or very satisfied. Yeah, I think as—as is obvious from the comment today, as obvious from the discussion, we have come to a point in feedback on the standards where we’re getting to a point of conflicting suggestions. So here’s—a couple examples. In here, you can see some comments that saying, “These are—they’re not standards; these are prescriptives. They’re too prescriptive; we need this to be less prescriptive.” And then we also need—we have comments saying, “They need to be more prescriptive; they need more detail.” You know, there’s sometimes—when things are philosophically, you know, on the ends of the poles, there isn’t necessarily a great middle ground. So we can’t make them less prescriptive and more prescriptive at the same time. We—we need to find some place that takes into account the—the charge of the C3 and the goal to have the fewer, higher, clearer, as well as have enough detail to represent important figures in history, both American US history and world history. That’s very important in the standards. I just would like to remind everyone that the standards—there is still a substantial US history focus throughout the standards. There is also strong world history, geography, and understanding our place in a global society, but there is not—there is world—US history, excuse me, is in 5, 8, and 11. If you look at the high school, there’s substantial detail—or attention paid to “One Whole Strand” is around US history. So just to be clear, we—we still make sure students understand US history. We also try to make sure students understand world factors, global factors, and history from a broader variety of perspectives, which is—which is important. And then we had what we would call guidance suggestions. So we’d like to see more information about the arc of inquiry, getting kids to develop their own constructivist questions. And then some people saying they’d be better off without your guidance. So this is—in the comments, this is a little bit where we’ve come to, this idea that more guidance, less guidance. But again, we want to keep returning back to the idea of the arc of inquiry, asking good questions, finding what we hope is the balanced spot with enough detail but not too much, and continuing while we understand—and obviously, this—is a political—there are politics involved in this discussion. We want to try not to be partisan about how we build the standards, look at them, or consider their importance. And I do—I thank the people who came and spoke about the professionalism of who has worked on the standards. Just to remind everybody, no one person wrote these standards. It was a community of professionals, professional educators. So one of the suggestions was about having professionals look at the standards. Just reminding everybody that we believe that everybody who’s worked on them are professionals. They’re professional educators, they’re professional social studies experts, they are professionals. So—and we’ve worked together on a collabor—in a collaborative way to get to standards that are reflective of a variety of perspectives, high quality, and leave room for local control and local implementation, as is appropriate in a local control state.
The next several slides are from the K-12—they’re screenshots taken from the K-12 change log that you have previously received, and they’re examples of the changes from the April draft to the June draft. In this slide, there are just some simple changes as far as style changes as requested. Page 37 changed semicolons to commas and so forth. So there were several changes in that regard that aren’t major changes, but things that were changed. This is from World History and Geography Era III, Classical Traditions, World Religions, and Major Empires. The edition—now, the standard is suggested by the Jewish community but would apply to all classical civilizations. The only change is what you see in the example, laws, religious beliefs, and practices. This is from Integrated US History Grade 8, Standard US II Civil War, and the only addition here is that the indigenous people suggested that the Civil War did impact them significantly and felt that they should be included, so we did. This is US History and Geography Era VI, The Development of Industrial, Urban, and Global United States, Standard 6.1, Growth of an Industrial and Urban America. From 6.1 to Labor’s Response, we originally removed the examples from the standards, but the feedback said that we should replace them, so you don’t see them right here, but they are included. Standard 8.13, End of the Cold War, Mr. McMillan suggested we put in these examples, and it was supported by quite a few people in the listen-and-learn sessions. The US History and Government Era IX, America in a New Global Age, Standard 9.2, Changes in America’s Role in the World. Again, the only change here was to include the examples listed in red. This came from Dr. Ulrich and several times from Public Review. World History and Geography Era V, The Emergence of the First Global Age, 15th to the 18th Centuries, Standard 5.1, Global or Cross-Temporal Expectations. That this was—the part in red was added at the request of the Sikh community, and over 400 of them strongly felt that this should be in the examples column, and they disagreed or strongly disagreed with the standards because of this example and other things that you have heard today. This is World History and Geography Era VII, Global Crisis and Achievement, Standard 7.2, Interregional or Comparative Expectations. Again, the only thing that’s changed is in the examples, Total War Ideology and the Armenian Genocide. This rewording was suggested by the Armenian Genocide Education Committee, and it was mentioned in some of the public feedback that we received. For civics, Standard C1, Philosophical Foundations of Civic Society and Government, that the only addition here is the addition of constitutional republic, that multiple sources in the feedback—the thousands of items of feedback that we got in the listen-and-learn and the online survey suggested that. And then finally, also in civics, C6, Citizenship and Civic Participation in the United States of America, C6-1, Citizenship in the United States, that the Confederation of Michigan Tribal Education Directors felt that this wording was was much more significant, much better for them, and then the change in capitalization for citizens.
So what are our next steps? First, we would encourage you to adopt the social studies standards that you have in front of you, and that’s based on the vast data from around the state. I experienced all of it from the point of view from the listen-and-learn sessions, both for the 18 version and now for the 19 version, and we have heard from thousands and thousands of people. This does represent the middle ground, and I do not say that in a disparaging way. We have listened, as Vanessa pointed out, to all communities, and this brings us to the closest point we feel that we can get. While being accurate, I wanted to point out, when Jim was talking about—a group or another suggested we do this—they did suggest it, but then it went back to the writers to take a check—a look at whether or not it was accurate and appropriate at that grade level and that position. So just so you’re aware that we did go through that process. We think this is the best version that we can get at this point in time. It does leave lots of room for local decisions, and the social studies community needs to know what we’re going to do next. And so I firmly think that the first best next step is to adopt the standards that you have. Next, after that, assuming adoption, we now then need to plan and organize professional development and learning opportunities, which would include input from ISD and RESSAs —we’re using content area leaders, organizations such as those who’ve helped us put these together to begin with, educational institutions—so I see several universities listed there; there are others—and other institutions such as the Library and Historical Center that we have right here, the Supreme Court Learning Center, the Historical Society of Michigan, Tollgate Farms. And I would add that Jim has been working with many groups on resources that could be utilized with these standards or with other—other work being done in social studies. And so we’ve got a plethora of work that has been created, and then we think we’d like to take a look at how we put that together in a holistic package for schools. Also, we need to begin assessments and developing an assessment, and so you’ll note that in the most recent spotlight, we are looking for applications for item writers and review committee members. These come from educators across the state, and it creates a fantastic opportunity for them to learn about what happens, how do you create assessments, and then what professional learning might need to be put into place in order to have educators ready to prepare students for those assessments. Finally, I remind you—you’ve seen this one before. It came to you in April. There have been 15 social studies educators and leaders who have put in 15,000-plus hours, more now. There were focus groups, we’ve had listen-and-learn sessions, responses and feedback—this was what we had available for us in May. 17 social studies writers and task force chairs put in over 3,000 hours, a task force—120 task force members, 2,500 hours, and seven work groups with a 2,200-hour input. There has been lots of input, lots of time, lots of discussion, and lots of good thought. We would not be here today were it not for the people who worked on this project, and I want to acknowledge our partners today. I don’t know how many of them actually came in, but if you are from one of the partner groups and helped with the social studies standards, would you please stand? So I thank you for all the work that you’ve done, and I’m sure that others will as well. And you see a list of the writers, many of whom just stood up. I’m not going to take time to go down through the list. time to go down through the list. They have been hardworking, dedicated, and caring. So with that, I'll turn it back to Vanessa.
Thank you. And I just want to echo Linda's thanks to all of our partners, our writers, all of the members of the education community, the broader community who've worked together and had difficult discussions on this, and put forward a product. And I like the words from the student, or the young lady who shared earlier, that she thinks that these standards, and it would help kids understand who she is. And I think that's what we've sought with these standards, is a way to accurately reflect history, but also help kids understand who each other are, and help them become good citizens in our society in the future. Superintendent Ellis?
Thank you, Vanessa. In addition to thanking our partners and the educators that were part of the development of these standards, and all the citizens that came out to the Listen and Learn sessions and offered comment online, I'd also like to thank Linda Forward and Jim Cameron for their leadership in bringing these standards to the State Board multiple times. And so now we will open it up to comments and questions from board members.
Should we do a motion?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, thank you. I need a motion, please, to approve the social study standards that are presented today. Okay, I have a motion from Judy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from?
I'd like to move to-
I'm sorry.
Move to approve the social study standards as presented and accept the amendment presented by the Sikh community today.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion to amend the standards as reflected in the amendment that was presented by the Sikhs today.
Correct.
Okay?
Support.
And we have support. So we have a motion, and we have support. Discussion. Tom?
First of all, you know, I don't know where you got your percentages. I looked at the online responses, we're two to one against, either very dissatisfied or dissatisfied. So I don't know how you showed what you did, but I double-checked my math, and it's 64 to 36, essentially two to one. So there was against it. At Oakland County, somebody said 95%. I was there, it seemed like at least three to one against. I don't know about the others, I didn't have time to count everything that we had, but in emails that we've gotten over the last month, it's at least 50 to one against the standards. The public comment today was about 20 to one against. You know, I don't know who is trying to do the counting here, but, you know, or what their motives are, but, I mean, I think it's clear that there was, there's a mass majority, a significant majority opposed to these standards that have spoken up over the last couple of months. And, you know, what, I also think that, and I looked at, by the way, the 2018, some of the comments that were around the state when they went around, I mean, I was reading it, and I don't know how it was portrayed, but it was like, you know, Senator Kolbeck wrote the standards, which he was one of 130 or something. I mean, it was ridiculous how, you know, the whole thing got, you know, there was such fervor and frenzy over stuff that was inaccurate. And again, I've said it before, if they were that, if they were bad, I mean, a lot of the same people worked on them, why didn't we just change a few of the items? I know there were some that were quite upset, we could have relooked at those, but to throw that out and then go through a process that some are claiming was collaborative, but I think Judge Warren was the only out of the 130 that was involved here this year. He made it clear that it was not collaborative. He was, in his committee alone, they worked and struggled and debated and came to consensus, and then the draft, the chairman just changed them. Threw out all of the things that he got into the standards that he thought made them less biased, and they were thrown out. So, you know, I mean, we can claim that there was collaboration. It wasn't. It was decided by Mr. Cameron and whoever else what these standards were going to look like, and it was going to be aligned to the frenzy, you know, groups that were there from last year, apparently. And so I, you know, and it's obvious that there is a lot of dissatisfaction. I think a couple people mentioned that I think what's going to result is more and more people being dissatisfied with public education, concerned about funding. I mean, I know there's people that are interested in increases. I think there's going to be a call that if you're doing this with my money, you know, I don't want to give as much to what's going on. And so I really think that there's a real problem here. And I think that clearly there is a huge majority opposed who has spoken up to these standards. There, you know, even people, the professor who, from Wayne State, who wrote, was very involved in the 2007 standards, you know, the consultant, social study, the social studies consultant at Oakland Schools, I mean, these are people who, you know, are also certainly, they will make it clear they're not right-wing or left-wing or anything like that. They were saying that these are confusing. I hear that a lot from academics and people who, you know, have said that these just need to go back and be redone. Now, you know, I think that some were suggesting, like Judge Warren and the attorney Bloom, and a couple others, to send it to, you know, an outside review committee. I think that that is something that I'd like to, you know, when the time comes, to at least make that motion. I would prefer that we restart, but that will be reflected in my no vote if we don't at least send these out to a review, and an external review and see. And it would include Mr. Crewman. I've got a list of some people that I would suggest. Senator Tice had some ideas. I'm sure we could collaborate and come to a group of people that we would be, that we would, we could agree on, but to suggest that there was collaboration in this is laughable. It was dictated after the committees by the, either the chairman or a group of chairman, or, you know, I mean, it was not, the committees that actually did the work, or at least the one, you know, that's a real problem in and of itself, of the 130 that were working on this. I know of only one that share more of my values. Now, some of them might, but before, in 2018, there were several that I, that I knew that were on there. And again, if we took those and just needed a few changes, that would have been something that we certainly could have done. But to wholesale throw out significant, 20% of, 30% of changes, or even more, you know, there was something that, there was a lot of wrestling, a lot more wrestling in trying to make them unbiased last year. And again, I understand there were some concerns, and we certainly could have addressed those. I disagreed with some of it as well. But I just, I would hope that, at the very least, we do send it out and get some kind of a review, because it's clear that these are biased to the left, to significant to the left. And, you know, I think that the result is not going to be what everybody around this table wants. It's going to be, you know, less support for public education, more people pulling their kids out. I mean, not that this is the only thing, but this might be the tip, this might be the thing that tips them over. So I would, I'm very concerned. Certainly, if we vote on the motion as presented, I'll be voting no, but I will also, when time comes, at least make it a, I don't know if it'd be amendment, but it would be a tabling in order to have an external review.
Thank you, Tom. Lupe? Andrea?
Okay, so I am very excited. I am very excited that we have these standards for social studies in front of us. I want to thank Dr. Pritchard, and I want to thank Dr. Albridge for making the motion and seconding the motion. And I'm very appreciative of the three of you for leading the group, and everybody in the room that were part of the, all the process. It was an extensive process. It was a lot of hard work. The passion that was expressed today was very enlightening. I strongly believe that these standards have a platform for more than one group of people. This platform, this foundation that we're building here in 2019 includes many, many other people that are living in our state and have children in our schools. I go to my granddaughter's school in Forest Hills, and everybody else is a different, from a different group. So my granddaughter is getting a beautiful education in Forest Hills, and I know some of you are from Forest Hills. My children went to Northern. And so, having said that, the social study standards have to reflect, have to be diverse, have to be inclusive. They have to be unbiased, they have to be clear, they have to be fair, they have to be exciting. Now, I used to teach social studies, I've told you a million times, and somebody said in the group that the teachers should teach more than what is required. I was one of those teachers. I would design my own unit to be more inclusive because they didn't exist. So with these social standards, we're going to be able to include more people. Now, we can say these standards go back to committee, but I don't care how long or how many years more. Philosophically, we're not going to come to any different conclusion. Everybody thinks different, but I think what you have developed here, together with the team, is standards that incorporate many philosophies and many peoples, and these peoples represent our students in our schools throughout the state, or converted with many different kinds of children. And so these standards are going to be inclusive of all these children. It's a new beginning, because the other standards are, how many years old? 100? Many, many years. And so now, we're starting with a new beginning, a new beginning. And so I am very thankful, I'm very hopeful that this is going to take us to a new adventure, a new way of doing things in the schools, a new way of teaching. And I think that the educators that we heard today, they're in the classrooms, they were very supportive of the standards, and I think those are testimonies of now as to how we're going to proceed. And to me, that was very powerful. So my vote is going to be yes.
Thank you, Lupe. I'll turn to Cassandra, and then I will go to Nikki.
So I want to echo Lupe's comments, and thank you for all of the hard work that you've put into this. I know it's been a long time coming, and I think the process was extremely inclusive and really allowed for the best possible product that we could have. I consider myself a social scientist. I have, as you know, a bachelor's degree in poli sci, and a master's and PhD in essentially political communication. And so this has, this has been exciting for me, just to watch the transformation of this happen. But I can tell you from my educational background, you learn facts and you learn information, and that's really important, but the critical thinking aspects don't come into play until you actually get to learn through inquiry and actually delve into material. And that's what I think is the most exciting part about the standards that we have in front of us, is it's not just about memorization, it's not just about understanding what date, what happened and what date, and who was there, but really, what does that mean to you and to your future? And so to me, I think that's really exciting about these standards. Are they perfect? No, because the reality is, there's no such thing as perfection. Because what's perfect to me is clearly not going to be perfect to Tom, and it's not going to be perfect to Michelle, and it's not going to be perfect to Judy, or to anyone sitting in this room. So we can't strive for perfection because it doesn't exist, but we can strive for the best product possible. And I think that, you know, we've certainly come very close with these standards by bringing as many voices into the process as we possibly could do. I just have one, one quick question, though. I know that a lot of eyes have seen this, and a lot of different experts, and not everybody agrees, which is part of the problem, right? But if, after all of this is said and done, if we do discover that there is something that is just blatantly factually inaccurate, we have a mechanism to correct that, correct? Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So for anyone who's concerned that there's a certain standard that they think has a factually inaccurate piece of it, this isn't the be-all, end-all. Like, we have the ability to correct something like that.
Yes.
Okay. So with that being said, I will be voting yes today.
Thank you. Nikki, and then I'll come back to Pam.
Just a quick response to Cassandra. I think we have had multiple people come to try to correct some of the things that are in the standards, and they're not feeling respected. So to go back and say, now I respect you, would be really pretty disingenuous, I think. So I would say that I very much disagree with the idea that this is inclusive, because if it was, then we wouldn't have as many emails as we've had. We wouldn't have droves of people showing up and saying they feel like they haven't been respected, or heard, or involved. So I'm feeling like this is definitely something that perpetuates distrust, and is not an environment that makes relationship something that can happen. That continues to frustrate me. I feel like I've shared that each time we've talked about the social study standards. So, I mean, I'll be voting no today, based on the fact that I wouldn't say that we're going for perfection, we just, we haven't found balance yet. And we lack mutual respect, trust, and relationship, I think, as a result. So, but then I thought it was interesting, even your slide here, which I'll point to. When you ask educators overall how satisfied they are with the standards, let me make sure I'm reading this correctly before I make the statement I'm about to make. 67% are satisfied or very satisfied, correct? 25% are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied, and 8% are indifferent. So if the public holds us accountable the way that we sometimes talk about the A to F, that's a D+. That's really a foundation for disunity, from an educator perspective. And that's what we're going to turn out today. I'll be voting no.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki. To Pam, and then to Tiffany.
I will say what I said a few months ago, in that, you know, I know it's not been easy, and we've been pretty hard on you, and especially as it relates to, you know, making sure that you're inclusive of all groups. And so I just have to say that I appreciate how you've gone out to try to make sure that there's a well-rounded group of, or set of input. And so I just hope that we can continue to do that. You know, looking at the writers, I know we're going to need to have a diverse group of people who, as we move into the professional development part of this, as Cassandra has said, you know, some type of quality improvement, something that we can have input from a cross, diverse cross-sector of people as we move this forward. I know one of the things that I was hearing was the religion moving from the sixth, from the seventh to sixth grade, and I guess if you could shed a little bit more light on, you know, if there's flexibility there for educators, and that you all are familiar with that argument, you've heard it even today. And then, just as you all are answering that question, you know, to Tom, Tom and Nikki, and to all of those who provided input, we do hear you. This is, as we said, this is not perfect, but I think that, as we've said, it's been some years. I know, what, this is our third iteration, I think.
Five years.
Yeah. That we've been going through this, and so it is, it is difficult. And so I do know that it is hard for the board members, and, but I just think that it's the best set of standards that we have before us, and the process has been far more inclusive. And so thanking everyone for their input, and hoping that we can set up a way that we can continue to get- we can continue to get input, again, as we roll it out, but also as we roll out how our professionals handle this information. So, the question was around the seventh through the sixth, and you might have already...
So, I'll give a kind of a global answer. The reorganization of the standards between sixth and seventh grade, I'll let Jim answer more, but we reorganized content so that it flowed more naturally, and there wasn't repeat coverage. Lyndon made a point, the way we test now, we don't test until eighth grade. So, in theory, if a school wanted to recover, or split it up, or do it differently, that's... And even in general, the grade level expectation, or the grade level bands are, if a school doesn't want to approach it that way, and they wanna double up, that is okay. The standards just outline the kind of recommended sequence of delivery, but there's local flexibility. Jim, do you wanna talk more about why that sequencing was changed?
Now, with sixth and seventh grade, that previously, we had Eastern Hemisphere, Western Hemisphere, and basically had the same standards, just applied to different hemispheres. And the people, I've attended many Michigan Council for the Social Studies conferences, dealt with, obviously, a lot of social studies people, and some schools have already done that, that they've already done what we are proposing, that they're having World History One, World Geography in the other, so that they don't have quite so many standards.
Right. As you can appreciate, it's a lot of content for educators to cover, so not repeating is really important that we...
So, that concern was, they weren't necessarily, they understood that, but just making sure that something like religion, something as heavy as that is, that they, there's some sort of flexibility, if they feel that the children are too immature at that age, that there's something that they can do to address it, at that, go back to addressing it at the higher grade.
Yes.
One, they could go back, and two, because of the assessment being placed where it is, they could leave everything just as it is, as far as placement, and still have everybody ready for the assessment.
Okay. Because I do agree, religion is a very difficult subject to teach, and we definitely don't wanna be proselytizing kids one way or another, and have that much influence in the school on a child that may be too young to take in that information, so...
Thank you, Pam. Tiffany, and then I will come to Michelle.
Before I get on my soapbox, because I do, I believe that I'm a person that is firm but fair, I wanna get clarity, because, and understand, I don't see it in gray, I see it in black and white. And I keep hearing people say it's biased, it's not fair. I've heard a couple of things, I heard the republic versus democratic argument. And then, I'm hearing people say about Christianity. I wanna get clarity of what you guys think is wrong with the Christianity part, and Tom mentioned that it was a few things that needed to be changed, from your view.
From the 2018 version, not this one.
So, nothing, I mean, you're saying things that need to be changed.
Oh, Tom, need to be changed here, yeah.
So, can you give me at least a few, just bullet points, of exactly what you're saying with, in respect to Christianity, and a few other things?
We've been emailed them, actually.
What's that?
We've been emailed them, just so you know.
Yeah, I mean, they're, and I was wondering if somebody's gonna, because there is just a plethora of them, I mean...
But specifically, because, I mean, even the emails are the same.
But then, once you go with the specific, then it's like, you know, is that all it is? No, I mean, there's, you know, fifty, a hundred, if you look at Judge Warren's analysis...
But if you could just give me a few bullet points right now.
I mean, removing things like, you know, in 5.2.3, the growth of Christianity and the role as a cultural, political, economic force, the fact that Islam is, I mean, it's sixteen times mentioned, Christianity's mentioned six times. You know, I mean, there's, you know, but then, you look at, you know, the omission of Hitler and Mao, and anything that's social, anything that puts a damp or a negative view on socialism. And that's what, you know, a lot of adults, not just conservatives, can't believe is happening. And they say it's because of what's going on in the public schools, that they're not teaching the murderous history of authoritarianism, and how wonderful, you know, our country and our system of government has, and what they do to their own people in a socialist, authoritarian society, and that, you know, I mean, it's just, there's, you know, like I said, I mean, Judge Warren elaborated probably a hundred different things, and you heard a lot of them today. It's significantly slanted.
So, is Hitler omitted?
No. And we went through, we went through at the board table in April, many of Judge Warren's concerns. We've also had nice dialogue offline, we've exchanged letters, and detailed documentation. You saw here, just to show, sorry, that we did put some examples back in that were brought up through this. So, let me find it. Specifically here, this standard previously, and we had a discussion about it here at the table, this standard previously just said, "Describe the end of the Cold War," but it didn't list out Reagan, Gorbachev, all these things. And the board expressed concern that without those examples, maybe a teacher wouldn't know. Then, some of the board said, "Well, I would never have taught the end of the Cold War without Gorbachev." So, we tried to go back and put some examples in. Hitler is still in the standards. Certainly, I just, I think it's a good, it's a good talking point, but in no way did these standards not talk about the problematic history of authoritarian and totalitarianism, or whatever was just said. They actually ask kids to think hard about the way that authoritarianism, about the way that power and struggle happens across the world, and across a diverse group of cultures, and from a diverse group of perspectives. Struggle against power is a thing experienced by many people, not just one perspective. And these standards try to frame that more. So, there, I appreciate you pushing for specific examples, because then we can give specific information. It's hard when it's, you know, thousands of things are wrong. But Hitler is in the standards, and he's not in the standards as anything other than a historical figure of great concern to all of us, and the lessons from that are things that I think, actually, we really need to take very seriously at this moment in history.
I definitely wanna have clarity.
Okay. It was removed from the prior year. I mean, the last years, they spent a lot more time showing the problems of authoritarian governments, and a lot of that was removed, including references to Hitler in that respect as well.
So, standard 7.2.4, for example, responses, it's on page 113, "Responses to Genocide: Investigate Responses to Hitler's 'Final Solution' Policy by the Allies, U.S. Government, International Organizations, Individuals." That's one example.
But there was, I mean, I'm just saying that there was more, it was more clear, the effort to try to show the horrible back, you know, the horrible features, and it just seemed, that's what, you know, Judge Warren and others, who are content, I mean, I feel they are more content experts, they've said that there's been a lot of pulling back on that, and making it so that it's not as clear, and that it, again, that goes to what I think there's a lot of concern with what's going on in the public schools. How can these kids be coming out of college grasping for something that has had such a horrible history?
Tiffany, are you done, or do you want me to come back to you?
No, no.
Okay.
I feel like what has been taught in school has been biased for years, as a member of the African-American community. I mean, we were taught that our ancestors were slaves and nothing more, and that's it, and that our race is subservient, for years. We're taught in this country, if you have one drop of black blood, that's it, you're black, and you don't get to embrace the other sides of you. So, I have African ancestors, I have Spanish ancestors, I have French ancestors, I have Native American ancestors, but I can't, I'm not supposed to acknowledge that. There's a lot of ideologies that have been pushed through schools that are wrong, and exclude people, and exclude their heritage. So, I think Christian, I grew up in a very Catholic family. K through 8, I went to private school, Catholic school, Christian school, Baptist schools. In college, I got a chance to study world religions. I've been to the Sikh temple, I've been to the Bahi temple, I've been to the Buddhist temple, mosque, synagogue. I'm still Christian. You know, but it's nothing wrong with learning about the way other people live, and embracing other things outside of your own box. So, all I'm hearing, though, is that we should exclude some of the things that make America great. Learning about other people's heritages, acknowledging and being sensitive to the fact that there are gays that live here in America. We're excluding groups of people, and that's not fair. That's biased.
I haven't heard anybody say that's what we're doing here today. I've heard people talk about inalienable rights versus individual rights. I've heard us talk about a constitutional republic versus a democracy. That's not at all what we're talking about. And I think that, everything you just said, I completely agree.
Even the Constitution, even the Constitution, which I respect the Constitution, and I'm proud to be an American, that didn't include my people for the longest.
I just think there...
And some of us still don't feel included.
I just, I think you're giving us things that we haven't actually said, and we don't actually feel.
People have talked about gay rights. I just said that. We begin emails, and people have been saying, "We're pushing a gay agenda, we're doing this, we're doing that." No, we just wanna say, "Stop excluding people. We're all a part of this history."
Agreed.
Tiffany, anything else? Otherwise, I'm gonna go to Michelle at this time, I can always come back. Thank you. Michelle?
I'm just curious about a couple of things. So, how often are people tested on social studies?
Currently, in grades five, eight, and 11.
So, five, eight, and 11, okay. And these would be aligned to the curriculum?
These, the standards, would be what we would build the test from. At the standard level, not the example level, I wanna correct that, that was a factual inaccuracy you said earlier. It's confusing, so I just wanna make sure I clear it up. The examples are not what we will build the test from. We build the test from the standards themselves. And I, we have our assessment consultant in the room, who's been actively trying to think about how we do this, and how we do this in innovative new ways, but it, so, standards, assessment measures the standards, the curriculum should implement the standards, as well as use the examples and other pieces that won't be part of what's on the test.
They also, the...
The state standardized assessment.
And so, and then I'm also thinking about the role of the local control, and how they have this, I talked to my husband, who's trained and is a social studies teacher, but he says the, there's just more in the standards than can ever be covered, so it's a matter of trying to pick, peer down what it is. So, and he supports the work that is being done. But what he was saying is that there is a lot of leeway given to the local district and the teachers on what will be, how to shape what's there, because there's so much there that it can be contained.
It should help with that statistic.
Yeah, well, I don't think people really know what the standards are gonna, I mean, they, you've seen the document, and, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, but I think you've got a point there.
That's significant.
But I think it also, it reflects our divided society, and what people are being told, that it's like, oh, it's socialism, or it's, and people haven't even read it, they're just going by what someone said. So, and I know it goes both ways, too, on that kind of, you know, up the base kind of stuff. But the, not that those aren't firmly held beliefs, but I wanna just say, okay, as a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, and as Bernie supporter, and as someone who studied in Stockholm, where there's a social democracy, where there's some, where, and that socialism does not equal authoritarianism. Authoritarianism equals authoritarianism. Somebody who wants to take power and have full control can do it in all sorts of forms of government. And there's plenty of examples around the world of non-socialist countries where they have authoritarian or leadership, where the government is not in, is at what might be called, you know, some sort of crisis or problem with their, with their democracy or constitutional republic. I also don't think, I think it's a matter of semantics, whether you call it constitutional republic, I think they're both true. I think it's a sort of a straw argument to say, "No, we're a democracy, no, we're a constitutional republic." I agree with the person, Mr. Libby, I think, who said that we're both. So, why are we fighting over something that, to me, is just semantics? It's, you know, we all agree that the people, I think everyone here believes it should be a government of the people, by the people, for the people, that people should have a say in that, and I think those are the common principles we hold, and arguing over all of this is, I don't understand it. I also strongly disagree with people who say this is a Christian nation. The African, you know, this is, this is a nation of many religions. This is, and I've heard that a few times, and I've read it, and I think if I'm going to try to please somebody who believes that, I will never, that can never be pleased, because we are not a theocracy. We are, we are great because we separate our government from religion, and we allow all religions a space to exist. So, that's my two cents. I do, I would love to have consensus. You know, I respect the ideas of people who have concerns, and I wanna, I mean, it's my nature to wanna please everybody, which is sort of a blessing and a curse. But I think, given that locals, communities can still be able to shape and focus on things within their curriculum, I believe, I do believe that, I do have a problem with the standardized tests and driving the curriculum, and I do believe that the local community should have more control over what is priority to their community within those standards. And the testing bothers me, that that would drive it, I thought it was less testing than that. And maybe that's something that needs to be looked at, and deciding what is gonna be tested on, and developing that, and making sure that it's, it's something that reflects what people feel are important. But, but given that, I'm prepared to vote yes for the standards.
Thank you, Michelle. I do, since you did bring up the democracy versus constitutional republic, I did just wanna pause on that for a minute, because I think it was a core concern that we've heard coming in, it's been there through both of these rounds of feedback. You see, here is a place where we added constitutional republic in as one of the examples, and I agree, Michelle, it can feel a little bit like semantics, but it's not, it's more than semantics. I think Judge Warren got up and said it's more than semantics. So, we wanted to add constitutional republic in the standards. There are ways in which our country rarely, and more at the state or local level, functions like a direct democracy, more often it functions like a constitutional republic. The framers use the terms in different ways, and there are plenty of people in the room who are more scholars on this than I am, but this was taken into consideration in the discussion. It is not meant to be dismissive of people who say, so I understand the concern remains, that particularly in the younger standards, we still say democracy, and we don't say constitutional republic, or, but I wanna point out the C2 strands, this is on page 121, this is in the high school, "But one of the compelling questions, in what ways might the federal and state governments reflect characteristics of both direct democracy and a representative republic, or neither? What might be the best forms of representation?" We actually, I think actually, this discussion is such a good example of the kind of wrestling that we want to teach students to do with these concepts. Our founding fathers said things, they said they called this differently. So, I think we're trying to get it to a place that represents that discussion and pushes toward it.
I also appreciate the fact that you guys put multiple forms of democracy in, because direct democracy is only one form of democracy.
Right, right.
And our country tends to operate as a representative democracy, and that's very different than two sheep and one, you know, the example someone gave earlier, that's direct democracy. We operate very differently in many, many different circumstances. So, I think having an understanding of that, and being able to discuss that and recognize it, is really important.
Yes. So, we have, I, thank you, Cassandra. So, just saying, we did not, if it felt like we dismissed those concerns, we did not. We have really, as an enterprise, as a collaborative enterprise, not Jim on his own, Jim did not make any decisions on his own, poor Jim. After Jim's five years of hard work on this, he probably would have loved to just make some decisions on his own, but he does not. We make them in a collaborative fashion... We make them in a collaborative fashion. We really wrestle with this, and we've tried to find a place in the standards that creates space for this important factual information about the different forms of, of government and a place to discuss it in a way that supports our students.
Okay, thank you, and now to Judy.
Okay, thank you. Very quickly, first of all, I appreciate all of the hours of research, listening, debate, and I know there's been lots of debate, as only can happen with social studies teachers, and review that you have done over these five years. I think we all acknowledge they are not perfect. We knew that probably going into the process. We've all heard from the citizens. I commend each and every one of you who are here today who have spoken. I commend those who took the time to send us emails and voice your concerns. That, to me, as an ex-social studies teacher, is democracy in action. You have that inalienable right to be able to sit down and tell your elected officials what you think, and you can do it without any repercussions at all. And I personally welcome that and appreciate that and did try to, as I got those emails, go through the standards again and try to, in my mind, address where there might be concerns and firmly believe that the department, to the best of their ability at this point, have tried to meet those concerns. As I said at the last meeting, where the rubber will hit the road on this, where it should hit the road on this is with our classroom teachers across the state of Michigan. And it will be the professional development and it will be the resources that they have in their classrooms. Keep in mind, at the elementary level, students are lucky if their teacher is able to teach social studies two times a week, sometimes three, because literacy and math are where we need to focus, and we all agree on that. And so for, I understand why the standards had to look different at the K6 level possibly than certainly what they're going to look at, like at the middle school or high school level, and the complexity of the definition of what's democracy, what's constitutional republic, et cetera, very easily, developmentally, third graders normally have difficulty with, my experience anyway. So, again, I commend all of you and thank you to everybody here today for voicing your concerns because, and issues, because I think we take all of that back and it makes us more cognizant as we move forward.
Judy, thank you very much. Do we have any final comments from board members? Tom?
You know, the fact is, is that, I mean, if you read Judge Warren's, uh, letters and commentary, you know, there is a lot lacking taxation without representation. The inalienable rights, I mean, I did a quick search, I think it's like six to one that it talks about individual rights, which is very dangerous. I mean, I, we heard from people saying that government gives individual rights and they can take them away. It's the, it was the inalienable rights that was unique and significant to our country and our founding. And, uh, you know, that, but there's also, you know, the, the lack of Mao and Lenin and all these murderous, uh, you know, people who are authoritarian, who, you know, as we, you know, I think that there's a lot of concern where our country is going. And so I think it would be important for our kids to understand that you need to be very careful when you start consolidating power and you start, you know, really wanting something like socialism and other things. It doesn't necessarily mean it goes in a direction, but once you start consolidating power, it's the government with its gun that enforces. And eventually, you know, we've seen that they, they eventually turn into Venezuela and other things that are just a disaster eventually. So just give it some time, and the others that aren't there yet likely will be. So, you know, I, I think that, and also, the thing that really bothers me, I'm no content expert, and none of us are here on social studies, and so we rely on the process. And the process was, was deeply flawed. It was very slanted, and, you know, Brian Wiston saw the problems and tried to make it as unbiased as he could, which is why he, he allowed Colbeck, and a few of 130, he allowed a couple conservatives, God forbid, you know, that a couple people would be able to give some input. So, you know, that, that was what he tried to do, and yes, there may have been a few flaws to that 2018, but I mean, to, it is, it's 30, you know, 30%, it's significantly hugely different now. It's, it's night and day from what it was last year, where if we could have just changed some things, but no, and, and again, that was, I believe, when, you know, when Brian saw, and I think we're going to see some problems the legislature's going to have. He saw it last time, and so he pulled back and said, "Let's, uh, let's include a couple." You know, I think it's pretty well-known, you know, that in academia, you get academics and they're by and large left-leaning. I know, I think every study or survey shows that. It's no, no, uh, no secret. And so to actually allow a couple people that have more conservative values, it didn't mean they were writing it, which is what seems like MDE was saying last year at some of these gatherings that went around the state. You know, Colbeck didn't write the thing. He was one of 130, but, you know, that was, that was what was expounded, and I see it in those comments time and time again. It was just fallacious and wrong. But the process was bad. I mean, there is one person that I, that I know and that I trust, Judge Warren, that were in that 130, and he said it was extremely bad. I mean, the things that he wrestled with were thrown out, that were agreed upon by content experts, they were thrown out. And so that, that to me says, this was just a whitewash. This was just, you know, fait accompli. And, you know, if there was anything, the one person that I think was able to, you know, get some, try to get it unbiased, you know, those suggestions were thrown out. So it's, uh, you know, I certainly, well, once everybody's done, I'd like to at least make a, a motion, but I'll, it'll be a tableing motion, so there won't be any discussion on it.
Tom, I know that Lupe wanted more, another comment, and Cassandra after that.
I want to call the question.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'm, I, I don't know. Is the, is the chair acknowledging that, or? She don't have to acknowledge that.
Entertain my motion.
You don't have to acknowledge that. That would just cut off debate.
I thought you, you have to, if someone calls a question.
Yes, I called the question.
Then you can cut off debate.
Call the question. I called the question.
We have...
Good, I get to say coffee.
Is there a motion? You can just call the question like after one person talks and you're beginning to debate.
Well, we did, we've had everyone around the room who's had a chance to talk.
Procedure-wise.
You have to, parliamentary procedure, you have to entertain it.
Do you vote on whether to call the question? Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, we are calling the question. We will vote on calling the question.
And then I can make a motion to table after that.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
All right. So, all in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, we have two nays.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make a motion.
Call the question.
I'll make a motion.
No, call the question.
I'll make a motion that we table this until...
No, we vote, we vote on the main motion now.
No, she said that I would be able to make this motion. If she didn't, then we, I would have...
You're not following parliamentary procedure. We have to follow parliamentary procedure.
The chair said that I'd be able to make my motion.
I called the question after we vote on this, Tom.
Oh, you don't make it after you vote. You make it before.
Yes.
I don't know, I forget to have a discussion after you've called the vote.
No, no.
Well, we called the vote, we made a motion, and we...
It passed.
You make my table, it's going to go down, okay?
But let me, yeah, just let them, please. Let them, let them...
No, just follow, and then, after we vote, then he can make his motion, but right now we have a motion on the table.
I'm tabling the motion.
What, what?
What motion?
The motion to approve the standards. I'm ta, I'm going to make a motion to table.
Well, that's another motion.
There's already a motion on the floor. I was calling the question.
And then I'm tabling the motion.
I called the motion and it passed.
Okay. As the chair, I am calling the question and we are voting on the question.
On the main motion.
On the main motion.
Oh, okay.
So you're not going to allow me to make a motion to table?
Well, if it fails, then you can...
Well, no, she's not going to let me make a motion to table.
Go ahead.
And Tiffany, you... Yeah, just let, I, I think we should. He mentioned it before it was called the vote.
No, you have to follow parliamentary procedure. We, we voted on calling the question. Now you call on the main motion. That's the procedure in parliamentary procedure and Robert rules. So we have to follow the parliamentary procedure.
I make a motion to table until an, an external review by five academic professors could, and experts can be, can review these standards and then brought back before us for a recommendation.
Okay, this is a, this is a heated conversation. We, people around the table feel very passionate about it, so I'm going to deviate from parliamentary procedure to allow Tom to make his motion and see if we have a second.
It's way out of, out of procedure.
I understand that.
It is.
I raised your hand before that, so we had other things that were going on, too, before that, so.
But when you call the question, you have to follow parliamentary procedure.
And I said, Lupe, I am, I am deviating from parliamentary procedure to allow Tom...
You can't.
But she said she would.
You can't.
Okay.
It's the thing, you can't.
So, Tom has made a motion.
I'll second.
Nikki has seconded. So, the motion is to table to allow five experts to review the standards.
It'll be agreed upon by the officers of the board.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
We're going to do it around the table because I'm not sure I know the nays.
Should we do roll call?
Yes.
Let me get another sheet.
Fecto.
Table.
Table.
Nay.
McMillan.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Nay.
Hugh.
Nay.
Ramos Montini.
No.
Snyder.
Yes.
Hilli.
Nay.
Albridge.
Nay.
Motion fails. Moving on to calling, going back to calling the question. Yes.
Can we still have discussion?
No.
No?
Discussion is closed. When we called the question, we voted on the question, then discussion closed. So now we're, we are voting to adopt, I'm going to ask Marilyn to read the original motion with the amended motion to adopt the standards.
It is recommended that the State Board of Education approve the social studies standard and accept the amendment proposed by the Sikh today as described in superintendent's memo dated May 28, 2019.
And for this motion, we are going to take a roll call. Fecto.
Yes.
McMillan.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
Ramos Montini.
Yes.
Snyder.
No.
Hilli.
Yes.
Albridge.
Yes.
Six-two. Okay, six-two, standards pass. So now the work of the school districts begin. After 45 years of, as an educator and 30-plus years of working in curriculum, the work in the school districts will begin. I know that school districts are looking forward to having a decision made so they know next steps in their social studies standards. They will pull together teams of teachers, and the teachers will digest the standards, analyze the standards, and decide how to present these standards to their teachers in a way that meets the needs of the, of their district. They'll identify classroom resources for teaching these standards, and then the professional development for teachers begin. This is going to be a year-long process. We likely won't see the standards implemented in districts until the 2021 school year. So I'll give them a year's time to work on them. So, thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who was part of the board meeting today. We now have new social studies standards for the first time in 12 years in Michigan. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Model Code of Student Conduct. I will allow people to exit the room for a moment. Okay. Yes, 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 you can. You know, Lupe, I'm not sure if I was, if I was right or wrong, but I just needed to...
I want you to look it up, no, I want you to look it up because Robert rules says that when you call for the question, you stop debate and you vote on it and you proceed. It's right here.
And I was at fault because I told Tom I would allow him to have his motion.
No, it's irrelevant. You have to follow the rules.
I think you had a sense of what would be respectful and what wasn't, and so I applaud you in, in moving in the respectful direction.
But this is about Robert rules.
Okay, so, moving on to our next agenda item.
Come on, Kyle is on the floor.
The 2014 Model Code of Student Conduct has been updated to reflect changes in legislation that went into effect in August of 2017. The document was presented to the board on March 12, 2019, followed by a period of public comment. At the end of today's presentation, we will be asking the board to vote to approve the Model Code of Student Conduct as being presented today. Our presenters are Kyle Garant. Kyle is the Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and Amy Annalies, who is our Supervisor of School Health and Safety Unit. Welcome to the board. Table.
So we'll...
We are ready for your presentation.
We are focused. Content-wise, a little bit here. As Sheila mentioned, we are bringing a public comment back. Just to refresh everyone's memory, we sent you the revised, the public comment, the summary and the full public comment of all the respondents in the May 31 board brief, so you guys could have an opportunity to review prior to today. There are only four comments total. As you remember, we've, this has been out before and come back, and, and so our public comment was limited. So just a quick history of how we got here today. As Sheila mentioned, the current code was approved in August 2014. There were some significant legislative changes that required us to take a look specifically around suspension and expulsions to revise the, the board's policy, model policy, which again, just for a refresher, that the model policy is, is essentially a tool for districts to use or not use as they adopt their own local policies. So that's what the goal of this policy is to, is to provide a framework for school districts that would use it as a resource to approve their own policy. So the noteworthy changes of, that was brought back in March of 2017 was primarily around two, two areas. One was around consideration of alternative suspension and expulsion, specifically considering our sort of practices before suspending and expelling a student, that the school should take into account these seven factors, which Michelle has referenced earlier today and previous conversation around this, that districts must take into account these, these factors before giving students either suspension or expulsion or penalizing them for behavior in the school. And then this other piece was around the rebuttable presumption, which we've talked about before, was essentially having evidence, which it took me forever to understand what rebuttable presumption was, but it's a court thing, but essentially it's some, having evidence that supports a suspension or expulsion of that length is essentially what it refers to. So here's a summary of the public comment again. We, we had it open from April 9th to May 13th of 2019. You can see the breakdown of the four respondents that we had. One administrator, one who identified as a community member, and two that were from professional organizations. The comments that were encompassed in those, those four respondents were focused primarily around strengthening language around the seven factors, which is something that Perry Palmquist Stone mentioned when she came to present the board earlier, this last year, or earlier this year, excuse me, and suggested word changes to some legal sections, which not, they did not provide. It is a public comment this time, but Truun Law Firm was very supportive and provided a lot of comment and feedback the first time that this proposal went out. And so those, those were, those pieces were already incorporated in what was sent out for public comment this time around. Nikki had asked that we make sure that we do a review of all legislation that might impact this after we... And suggested word changes to some legal sections, which not, they did not provide, initial public comment this time, but Truand Law Firm was very supportive and provided a lot of comment and feedback the first time that this proposal went out. And so those, those, those pieces were already incorporated in what was sent out for public comment this time around. Nikki had asked that we make sure that we do a review of all legislation that might impact this after we were here in March, and we've done that to make sure that the policy is aligned to any legislation that was passed since, since we last brought the policy. We've sought public comment, and as the superintendent mentioned, we are bringing it back before you for approval today so we can share with school districts. With that, I will turn it back over to Sheila.
So we will open it up to comments, questions from board members. And beginning with Nikki.
All right, I have, I have just a theoretical thing that sounds, will sound silly, but I want you to walk me through this. I'm not a physical person, but let's say I punched Tom in the face. He's not gonna take that seriously, come on now. It's not gonna happen. So what does it look like to implement restorative practices during physical conflicts?
So restorative practices is a continuum of services. It can be anything from like classroom circles, just to have kind of a culture and climate setting for it to start off the day, all the way to performed by trained in restorative practices people to do kind of like a conflict resolution circle, which basically what it would do is it would identify the harm that has been done, not just a what did you do to this person, but how that person, kind of builds on the empathy piece of it.
So Tom is like bleeding and he's like, you punched me in the face.
Restorative practices would not be happening while Tom is bleeding.
It would be like.
This would be a much after the fact. Yes, so much after the fact, when things are calm, then it could be a conversation with trained personnel to state, you know, not only did you make a poor choice in this, but how wa, how was Tom impacted by it?
A counseling.
Yeah.
And Nikki shouldn't be punching anybody in the face anymore, right?
No, Nikki shouldn't be punching anybody in the face.
Then also, between him and I, do our parents come to the table and we all discuss it together?
It depends. Again, there's a continuum. It would depend both in the severity of the situation and also the comfort level of the victim, for no better choice of words right now. Because the last thing they also want to do is revictimize the victim to have a huge circle. So it would be the comfort level of the victim as well, there's just a whole bunch of things that would come into play in that.
We would offer Tom and his parents the opportunity to make that decision. The school wouldn't make it for them.
Most likely, yes. If he is not comfortable in that situation, he would not be forced into that situation.
What does it say?
Correct.
Not most likely, it either says yes or no.
What, where, what, what are we doing here?
In the standards.
I think that's important. I wanna know what most schools.
These are not, yeah, these are not standards.
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
But so what, what are we encouraging, as the state board, if we pass this here today, what are we encouraging schools to do in that situation? Are we saying, I don't, like, I, I agree, I don't like most likely, I just wanna know, are you encouraging schools to call Tom's parents and say Nikki punched Tom in the face? Here's where Tom is at, and here's what he thinks and feels, and here's where we're currently at, there's no blood, all the facts are out, and then is it generally acceptable that Tom's parents should be able to say, I'd like to sit down with Nikki and Nikki's parents and try to, try to figure out how to restore whatever it is that's making her think she should be able to do that?
Restorative practices doesn't specifically require schools to call all the parents involved in any situation, whether it's between just you two, or if the whole board got in a fight and started punching each other, it doesn't require the schools to. The framework is to allow there to be a process before a district would suspend or expel a student to address the issues that were related in any given incident, whether it's a fight, whether it's bullying, whether it's social media posts, whatever it is, it's a framework that allows me to do that. In some cases, yes. In a lot of cases, actually, parents are involved in those circles. In that process, parents are engaged. There are some situations where they're not, where if there, let's say there was a further history between you and Tom and your parents put something on Facebook or threatened Tom in some way, we would not invite your parents to be part of that circle because you are revictimizing the victim as they imagine. So again, those decisions are made.
Well, we first try to bring them together, right? That's like a first try, is all I'm asking, is this a first try? That we're trying to bring the kids together with the parents and, and come to the table and have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I give, I just wanna give an example, because my kids give me lots of examples. The little one that I have now, I think he was nine or 10 at the time, but he was 10. Well, it was beginning of this school year, so he, I got a call that he was stabbing kids. It turns out he took a sewing needle to school and poked, according to the teacher, poked a couple of kids, but by the time it got to the superintendent, it was stabbing. And they wanted to automatically give him a five-day suspension. And, and I said, well, did you do the seven, did you go look through this? And so we had a discussion about that, because they weren't doing this, you know, he's, so you look at his age. So he said, well, he was stabbing kids and he's, you know, and I said, but he's, but he's 10 and the kids, they're not hurt, they're fine, they're, you know, they're just annoyed with him, they're not feeling unsafe. So, so you kind of like walk it through, and by the time we talked about it, we decided that my nephew, who I'm guardian of, would write a letter, or would the, the other kids would write a letter to him, telling them how it made them feel, how they didn't like it, how they didn't wanna hang out with him, and he, you know, help with this, what they ended up being, let them know how they felt. And, and it worked. He hasn't had another suspension or episode since then. And, because it really hit him, he really cares about his friends, he likes to read, he's a reader and not a talker, so reading and hearing, it was a way that we came up with a process using these, this idea. So instead of just suspending him and taking him out of school the first five days of class, which would have, you know, then he would have been mad at those kids, and then those kids would have, you know, then it just, like, then you have, it's, it can spiral. This sort of took the time to talk it through. I also wanted to meet with the parents, but the parents didn't.
So they have a choice.
Yeah, the parents, I wanted to meet with the other parents to see how, if they were okay, and they're like, oh, they didn't wanna be, they, they, yeah, that's not, not necessarily, so.
But it was offered.
But it was, yeah, and it was just, it was basically talking and taking, looking at the circumstances as a whole, instead of some, what I thought was overreacting. So it was taking the time to take a breath and see what the cause was, see what the best way to stop the behavior from happening in the future and help having all the kids sort of get along and understand each other. Anyway, does that, that help?
But if there were any incident at a school where either restorative practices was happening during the day, there was a scuffle or.
Yeah.
Punch Tom, parents would have to be notified at some point. It's not like the restorative circle happens and kids go home and, you know, parents don't.
But I'm going beyond notification. I wanna know, you know, it used, it used to be that people came together and talked it out, parents and kids. And somehow, somewhere along the lines, schools are just, like, we'll take it from here, no, let's, let's come to the table and work it out. And so I don't wanna just be notified that my kid got punched in the face. I wanna, I wanna work, I wanna see the parent's face and like develop a relationship out of the conflict. Not say, oh, this thing happened and we took care of it and you're good to go. I don't, I mean, nobody's kid's probably gonna feel good to go if they're, if they're coming home in that situation without any help.
This promotes dialogue, I think this promotes dialogue.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. And then one more thing about bullying and cyberbullying. If it relates to, you know, like suicidal, if there's anything that, you know, we had a child just this last year in, in our state that committed suicide and it was due to cyberbullying. But I'm just curious about, you know, when do you step in? I mean, I think you would step in immediately with that, right? It wouldn't be like a, we'll just kind of like, and then see where we go from there. If somebody's telling somebody to hurt themselves, that needs to be addressed immediately and very effectively.
There was recent legislation that does make cyberbullying a felony offense at this point. So when that is incorporated in here.
Okay.
Before I go on any further with discussion, may I please have a motion?
Oh.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second. Now, do we have any further discussion? Cassandra.
This will be extremely quick. On page 12, there needs to be a space between presumption and and.
I will make sure that gets included, thank you.
Oh, I have.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by board members? Tom?
The bottom of page 11, why, what's that, why was parents deleted? Yeah, parent guardian, so in a, if a short-term suspension is contemplated, the principal or assistant principal shall provide the student and the parent guardian with oral or written notice, but that, and the parent guardian was removed.
Are you under the due process for?
Like the, the very last paragraph in page 11.
Third line up.
Yeah.
Below that, it gives them the opportunity.
You have the wrong, wrong version, this, this one's getting a little bit more, is that one right there?
Can you repeat what you just said, Tom?
Oh, but then later on, it says the parent and student guardians shall be notified of this.
That actually came through the last public comment as a comment from Truand Law Firm, that that was not a legal requirement.
Well then, okay, but then on page 12, the third paragraph, which is just one sentence, it says they will be notified of the circumstances, oh, and action taken. Oh, that, okay, that's afterwards, but before. Well, I mean, it's not a legal requirement, but it's not a, it's, are we only putting things that are legal requirements, or are we putting things that are, think, are good best prac, or good practices?
Can do that. That was just changed based on Truand Law Firm from the last one. This was not incorporated in this previous, was incorporated in the last one.
Just contemplates, this is before the fact. So I, I don't know, I just didn't understand why, it sounds like. That the, the, yeah, I mean, the parent, the kid could get a short-term suspension and then the parents are only notified afterwards and not before?
I think, I think what that was getting at was that if, for whatever, if there was, back to where Nikki punched you in the face, Nikki punched you in the face before, before, this was saying that the, the district would need to contact the parent and guardian before they dealt with Nikki's immediate behavior.
So going through due process.
The practice, right?
So if, if they knew that she punched you and they're like, okay, we need to, we need to separate you, we need to take action based on the paper, we need to put you in, in school suspension for the, for the rest of the day or whatever, so we can contact your parents. This was saying, and this is why Truand said it wasn't a legal basis, was that they would, this was saying that the school would have to contact your parent, Nikki's parent and guardian before they could do that. And that's why it's re-added after the fact, that after that action was taken, you, they stopped your nose beating, they put Nikki, they separated you guys, Nikki was in a different space than where she's supposed to be classed from eyes for that day, then they would notify the parent, here's what happened, here was the action that was taken that day.
Well, but this is talking about a five-day suspension, not like during the day that it happened. I understand they wouldn't.
Well, it's up to a five day, so it could be a half a day suspension.
Anything up to a five day.
Okay, well, let me, okay, so from what I'm reading, a five-day susp, a four-day, or yeah, a five-day suspension could happen and the parents wouldn't know about it until after the fact, is that right? As I read this.
Where are you at exactly?
At the bottom of page 11.
Okay.
I, I agree with you, Tom, it's, I'm not sure why parent guardian was taken out of that sentence. It doesn't make any sense, because anytime an administrator is contemplating any kind of a suspension, the first person you call is the parent guardian. I, I can't believe, even with high school kids. It's one thing if you're contemplating.
I mean, is it somewhere else? If it's, if it's taken out because it's somewhere else, I'm fine, I just can't, I just wanna know.
I don't know why it's been pulled out there, because it's referenced.
But you, would you, are that scenario, would you call the parents first before you suspended them in that situation?
If, I felt as though that's the direction we were heading to give them a heads up, yeah, but, you know.
I mean, we, I don't think we have any problem in that, but again, again, this was.
Looks like the student could contact the parent, that's what the next sentence says, but, you know, maybe the kid says, I don't wanna tell my parents about this.
Be the student contacting the parent to let the parent know you're being suspended. It should be the school contacting the parent.
Can we just add that back in?
Yes, absolutely.
You are too funny.
Can take it out later if there was someone.
And remember, this is a model, so districts can, they can change this.
So this is, yeah, that was my, that was my final question. This is, this is only a model, a lot of them just adopted though.
The seven factors.
Given the, given where we're at in terms of when the law was changed and when districts need to update their policies, a lot of them rely on, you know, Truand or Neola or other law firms that developed their policies already, so a lot of them have an adopted policy already in place at this point, quite honestly. And things like our local wellness policy that the board adopted back in 2013, a lot of them use that as their framework on improving the nutritional environment in their school. So it kind of varies, but typically, typically they use places like Truand or Neola to help craft their policies for them.
They may use this policy as, just to review against the policy that they currently have for the student code of conduct.
And then, does any of this have to do with the, incorporate with the ACLU came before us and that was restored, they talked about restorative practice, right?
It's the law.
Some of it incorporating what their suggestions were?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that was a good question, yeah. So we did take a look at it and make sure that we're, there was nothing that we were missing.
And Perry recommented on, on this draft as well.
That was a good question. Were you surprised I asked you?
No, 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 no.
Getting laid, we're all.
I know, it's only gonna get worse.
So are we agreeing, in agreement that it should be in there?
Yep. Yeah.
It should not be.
A friendly amendment.
I, I made the motion, so.
And you made the friendly amendment to yourself.
Second agrees.
And the second, and the person who supported agrees?
Yeah, yeah, supported, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
It makes sense.
Okay. Other comments or questions by board members? Being none, then.
I, I have one.
Oh, yes.
And, and I, and I brought it up and I could, I don't see it in here, but we talk about the data and the availability of data, because I think it's good to benchmark some of these things, and I know that we've had issues with data, and I know when we had the ACLU discussion, I mean, it's come up a few times around suspension and expulsion and having data that's available, and I think that this would be a good time, a critical time to have that data available. So where are we on that?
About suspension data?
I ask you this question all the time, I just.
You, you know where we're at on it.
But how are we moving?
Current, current law allows us to collect suspension and expulsion data on students that have IEPs, as required by the federal law. We do not have a state law that requires us or allows us to collect suspension data on non-IEP students. We collect expulsion data on non-IEP students for specific offenses that are outlined in the law. So to your point, this is something we've talked about.
Yes.
Incessantly with a lot of different partners that we think that that, the suspension data is important to collect.
What can we do to address that?
The legislative change.
Have to make a legislative change, because the, the law prohibits us from collecting any additional data.
Yeah, because it's.
Unless it's legislatively required.
You don't want your child's. I don't want this aggregate, this aggregated data. I want to know how many children are being suspended, yes. I want aggregated data on how many children are, I don't, I don't, I'll just take the aggregated data and broken down by race. Can they collect that? He's saying no. Demographically broken down. The law doesn't.
Without, without any legislative action, we don't have the authority to collect that data.
We, we tried and, and we were told.
Okay, well, we put it back out there again. There was, there was an attempt with, there was Moore-Corgan, and there was that woman, the judge, Colleen Allen from Midland. Legislators, we were trying to get a definition and of, you know, just clearly what constituted truancy and suspension, expulsion, and, and it kind of died on the vine, but there was a, there was a whole movement to try to define that, because unlike other states, we're just, you know, it's just really hard to wrap your hands on it. And I'm, I do want the aggr, the aggregate, but I also want the disaggregated, because I think just knowing what happens, I wanna know where exactly the problems are and what the causes are, you know, not just.
I'm sorry, real quick, this went out of public comment, and was there anybody that's opposed to anything that was, that they suggested something, we didn't incorporate it? Was there a lot of people that are just happy, dissatisfied with something? Very dissatisfied or dissatisfied more?
No, there was one just general thing saying that it's, was still too firm, you know, and, and. No, there was one just general thing saying that it was still too firm, you know, and punitive, but a lot of it was all built in legislation, so there was nothing we could do about that, so, no.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions from board, all those in favor of the amended emotion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a presentation on partnership districts in Benton Harbor, and for that presentation, we welcome Bill to the board table this evening.
Well, I don't have a presentation. I can give you an update on the 24 month partnership districts. The dates will be on September 20th, or no, September 18th, we're going to have a 24 month review on Benton Bridgeport's balding. October 7th will be Saginaw, and then October 18th will be Detroit, but Detroit, remember, is, we wanted to do a 24 month because they had so many schools. So that's really the update on partnership districts for Benton Harbor. You know, there's been a committee that has been involved the last few months, working with the governor. I've been a part of that committee. The governor was down in Benton Harbor, as you know, last Wednesday. I was down there also. She answered questions at a public forum. And after that, then there was some, you know, dialogue back and forth, and the Benton Harbor Board will be presenting tomorrow, three board members, and three members of their attorney firm, will be meeting with the governor's team at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning to present their plan. So we don't know what that is, there was some indication in the articles, if you read some articles this morning about what they talked about at the Benton Harbor Board meeting last night, so, but the plan, we haven't received the plan, so that discussion will happen tomorrow. So that's the update with respect to that.
Do you want to mention Dr. Herrera's resignation?
That's next. The next part is, last week, we began to discuss, through their attorneys, I started talking with them about terminating the cooperative agreement early. I thought it was the best thing to do for the district. So we had an agreement that Dr. Herrera was going to turn in his resignation last night, and then the board would adopt a resolution to then terminate the cooperative agreement. I signed off on the cooperative agreement last night before the meeting, and scanned that and sent it to the attorneys. Then I got a call from the attorney last night that they accept the resignation for Dr. Herrera, and they wanted to appoint Assistant Superintendent Patricia Robinson as CEO Superintendent, but did not want to terminate the cooperative agreement, which was surprising and disappointing, because, you know, the board speaks through their attorney, and I was assured that that's what they wanted to do, so I'm not sure why that occurred. I haven't talked to any of the board members, so right now, there is a new CEO Superintendent, the Assistant, CEO Superintendent, which was the Assistant Superintendent Patricia Robinson. Dr. Herrera's resignation has been accepted. He's completed the things that he needed to do, and he is now not the superintendent/CEO of Benton Harbor. Now, there's articles that are going out the last couple of hours, saying that I rescinded the resignation of Dr. Herrera. That is not true. What I did this morning was I rescinded my signature to terminate the cooperative agreement. So as you read the articles, that's what I did this morning, because I didn't want the board to have my signature, and then any day, they could just say, well, we want to vote to terminate the cooperative agreement. The agreement was to terminate it last night, and they decided they did not want to do that. Like I said, which is surprising and disappointing, because, you know, should be, people should be telling the truth. So I'm not sure how it broke down, but that's what occurred. So when you read in the papers that I rescinded the resignation of Dr. Herrera, that's not true. I rescinded my signature, because the board decided last night, they did not want to terminate the cooperative agreement.
So the board, why, you're saying you don't know why, do they want to keep the cooperative agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
They decided they did not want to terminate the cooperative agreement, I don't know why.
Okay.
I will ask tomorrow morning, you know, when we have a break. So it was, like I said, disappointed, because, you know, I like to work on trust, so I don't know why they didn't want to.
Can they do that? They can.
Well, they, they decided, yeah, they decided they did not want to terminate it, even though I was told they wanted to.
It's not, it, it's not terminated. You still have more time. They still have more time in the contract.
Agreement is in place till June 30th, yes.
Okay.
Then, there is no cooperative agreement, there is no SRO.
Then there's no signature, it's just over.
Correct. Now, the governor's plan has a partnership agreement that's part of the whole process, so we'll see what happens with regard to what the board wants to do with the governor's plan, and what happens tomorrow when we're in discussion.
And.
Okay, Lupe, finish up, and then I'm gonna go to Pam.
Yeah. And, and why, why, I never heard of a super, CEO Superintendent. Where does a CEO come from?
That's part of the cooperative agreement that was signed last summer.
Okay.
It's the only time that's happened.
Thank you. And now to Pam, and then to Judy.
So the reason why I wanted to have this on the agenda, partially because of what you're saying, and let me just be very clear, because I was in Benton Harbor last night, I've been there a few times, I know others of us have as, as well, and the board, the local board is doing everything they need to do to protect themselves, because they're getting mixed messages as well. So some things I'm not even privy to, but they're being guided by their attorney as to what protections they do and don't have, given certain circumstances, so I'm sure that they're not just being, I know that they're not just being difficult, but they're being guided through their attorney as well. So one of the things that I really wanted to, to get clarity around, because it's this whole issue of the authority, and I sent this question, and I do want a response in writing, we did get a chance to talk about it a little bit from a treasury standpoint, and we've been talking about this, and it's gone round and round since January. What authority is the governor operating under in giving a proposal? And then I want to, and I'm using the word proposal very lightly, because the community was presented that, that proposal as if it was an option that was, that was something that they could not refuse, and this is something that, that we've been talking about, but what authoritizes that, and who, what authority is, is the governor operating under?
I don't know what authority she's operating under, but what was presented, as I understand it, is a plan so that the high school kids, you know, the high school would not be in place in a year. And then if the, but the board has the choice to accept that, and if they don't accept the plan, then July 1st happens, the board's in control, and then, you know, Treasury has their, you know, issues that they're going to work with Benton Harbor on, and, you know, supposedly, they would run out of money, maybe, I'm not sure, depends if they sell profit, there's lots of options the board has, so at July 1st, if they don't accept the proposal, and there is no other proposal that is talked about, then the board has total control of July 1st. So I don't know what authority the governor is operating under.
I'm, I'm not su, I can't answer that question either, Pam, but what I can say is, when the governor was in Benton Harbor last week, she did say that she was open to viable alternative proposal from Benton Harbor, and that she would be willing to listen to an alternate, an alternate proposal.
And, and let me be clear, because she, no one's doing this community a favor by listening to their proposals, the board gave us, I think it was in April, a very nice plan that they gave us. And so to act like they didn't have a plan before this proposal came up, we, that's, that's not true. So I guess that's, that's a concern that I have, and even while I'm over at Treasury, I'm still not clear. I, I hear it's still being pushed to MDE, that we're talking about third grade reading one time, we're talking, then I'm hearing about a debt that, that we're talking about, and it's still not clear, and I, I really want it in writing as to what authority MDE, the governor has, what authority MDE has, what authority Treasury has, and what authority the legislature has, and who is the author of, of the plan that, that went out? Because here's, here's the thing. Benton Harbor has a plan, and they're continuing, and this is just, you know, this is more on the academic side, and I know that they're working on a fiscal plan that, that they've not even shared with me yet. But when you send out this, this thing into the atmosphere, because being in these school districts, when you send that out into the atmosphere, you get parents that start thinking and hearing that their kids, their children's school is closing, and then that autumn, it's just like taking a bulldozer or a hammer to something, and that just takes out, you know, just further takes out the foundation, and it causes so much disruption, and this continues to happen in our black and brown communities, and it has to stop. So I want to know what authority we're operating under, and who is the author of the proposal that in some conversations I was hearing being shoved down residents' throat, and we all know, in a, in a, in our meeting at the retreat, we were told about the plan before the community was even told about the plan, which was totally unacceptable. We had teachers that were jumping ship because they heard about the plan before we even heard about the plan, so this is causing just further destruction in these communities. I understand that it has to be discussed, but we need to be more careful, and I still need to know what authority we, we are operating under, and I, I would like to have that in writing.
Pam, we can give you the authority that MDE has.
Because MDE is saying, and this is what I told them across the street, or, or down the street, is that we were hearing that MDE was told about a plan, that we were not a part of the writing, so I want to be clear.
That is true.
Okay, okay.
That is true.
And so have we handed over our authority to the governor? Have we handed over MDE authority to the governor?
In what regard? We don't, we, 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 MDE are operating under a CEO, under the cooperative agreement. We have a cooperative agreement. That cooperative agreement is in effect until both parties agree to terminate the cooperative agreement or June 30th, whichever comes first. That's the authority that we have with, with Benton Harbor.
Okay, so the proposal that was written on May 24th, that was, that was given, and it, and it's not a full proposal, because there's not really, the board has not really received anything, from what I understand, and from what I've seen, that really talks spells out this deficit, or this debt elimination, so, but what was presented in the newspaper and what's online, that is a governor authored, because it says the Michigan plan for Benton Harbor, so who is the Michigan?
The plan was shared with Bill and I, and with Treasury, and our input was, we were asked for our input, our reaction to it.
So who is the Michigan that, that authored the plan?
It's being presented as if it were, it's being presented as the governor, the departments within the state of Michigan, including the governor's office, MDE, and Treasury.
So MDE helped to write the plan?
We gave feedback on the plan.
But who, who authors?
I will tell you, I, I, I will tell you, the governor's team presented the plan to Bill and I and Treasury.
Under what authority?
You're gonna have to, we'll have to ask the governor for that.
And I did, I have. So, but it sounds like it's getting real slippery, and.
And we told, we told you that from the beginning. That the, that when you asked about the plan, we told the board that it was a plan that was presented to Bill and I and Treasury by the governor's team, and then we were asked for our input on it.
So let, let me just say two, a, a couple of things, because I don't want to be elected by the people, and then not do what I'm supposed to be doing. Number one. Number two, there are so many other communities that are right at the cusp of what we're talking about for Benton Harbor, especially when we go from debt to, where we're waffling, because I don't know on which day what we're talking about. But if we look, as a matter of fact, I talked to the treasurer in Benton Harbor last night, I spent some time talking to him, and he said, it can't be, he, he was telling me it couldn't be this, and it couldn't be that, because he was telling me of communities in his area, in his county, that are worse off than Benton Harbor, in a few different areas, I'll consult my notes. But what, all I'm saying is, I'm ready to pass, uh, 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 make a motion, make a statement, make a whatever, directing you and this department to not hand over our, our authority to any other department, and that we figure this out as to how this, this community will proceed, and that we're not sending out anything into the atmosphere that's gonna further destruct this community that has no, no law attached to it, no authority that's attached to it. That's, that's, that's about where I am, so I, I guess I'd rather hear some, I want to hear the other discussion. But it's still not clear to me, after asking several different people the same question, under what authority are we operating under? And Bill?
I just want to say, we are not giving our authority, the only authority we have is through the cooperative agreement, and we haven't given any of our authority over. We were going to do that last night, and have the Benton Harbor Board in place, in charge, but they decided they didn't want to do that. So we're not giving authority to the governor.
But if, if I was the Benton Harbor Board, I wouldn't trust anything. I would not all of a sudden come from under possibly the covering of, of a cooperative agreement. I don't know what they're, I don't know where they're going with this, but I'm, I know that they're consulting with their attorney, because now they have a proposal that's on the table, that, that's different from a cooperative agreement, and.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is that somebody's not telling the truth, because at 5 o'clock yesterday, everything was going to happen, everything was good. So I don't know who's not telling the truth, I'm just saying that when I got the call at 9 o'clock, that was a little, you know, surprising. But our authority, we're not giving the authority over.
And that's, I'm not talking about the cooperative agreement, because we, we started off talking about that.
Yeah.
I'm talking about when this proposal that said Benton Harbor was going to have to, you get, there's, there's, there's something that said, well, we all, on May 24th, there was a release that the state's plan calls for the closure of the high schools, for it to be chartered, charterized by Lake.
Michigan.
Michigan College, Junior College, and that everybody else disperse out to, to, to several districts, which I'll give you some input on that as well. But who authored that plan, and, and what was the impetus behind that? Was it financial, was it academics? If it's academics, who authored that plan? And if it was not MDE, who did we hand our authority over to, who wrote the plan?
We didn't hand our authority over. We were asked, if they were a partnership district, what might we include in that? So I put some things together, that here's what partnership districts do. But in terms of authority, our only authority is the cooperative agreement, and we didn't hand that over.
Yes, Lupe.
I have a question. In, in the past, when schools are, are closed, school districts are closed, who closes them?
I believe it's the legislate, legislators that do.
Not the, not the, this department?
No, we don't, we don't have a, we do, we do not close.
You don't have that authority to close school districts?
No.
So it's the legislature that closes them?
They can't pay their bills. What happened?
Isn't it, yeah, I'm looking at bills, I talk about Treasury having.
Yeah, there was a bill, Inxter 2.
Right. Who takes them over then? Who?
Well, when they, when they, when they, when they close, when they close, the community, the surrounding districts then, so when you think about when Inxter closed, the districts surrounding Inxter then absorbed those students.
Okay, but who decided to close Inxter? Who, who?
Legislature.
The legislature.
It wasn't us.
So is the legislature the ones that wrote this plan for Benton Harbor?
No.
So you see there's.
So let me just go back. When you, when you go and you cause mass destruction like this, then this should never happen, but you definitely should have the law that you're standing on.
Sure.
I, I just.
Where is that law?
And that's what I want, I wanted to ask, if maybe Marty or Carolyn, because I'm looking up, because I remember there was a series of bills that were passed that gave, that Tim Kelly was all. Yeah, 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 the financial.
I just talked about that with Treasury, but I still am not clear in the answer that I got from, from Treasury. I was not clear that what.
You were there.
I was, I was not clear that it was, that this was about, that this was Treasury that was.
No, I, I agree 100%, it should be, you know, it should be clear, I didn't, I never supported the bills, but I remember when they happened, you know, it. But I remember when they happened, you know, it was, um, it was people who were anxious to close schools that were pushing those through.
Because, because, because it's not a media campaign. Because to me, what I saw was almost like MDE signs on, so and so says it's good, such and such. Uh, the, the members of the community says that it's good. That's not how we close schools, because certain people say.
I'm just wondering what the law says. I'm just saying, what does the law say? I don't know what the law says.
But what I saw is. The legislature hasn't been mentioned in this closing at all.
No.
But they are in the conversation. I mean, they are threatening to take action.
Close the entire district.
Who is, who is?
Legislature.
Oh, yeah, but that has to be signed by the governor.
I was about to say.
The governor has veto power if that was to happen.
Right. But does somebody, could somebody just give me a clear understanding of what the law says? I just, because I would just, I would just like to know. Because I'm seeing these bills that reference all this action being taken by the Treasury around and, um, and then having these reports that have to be submitted.
Right, because it's a process. Whoever you fall under, there's a process. And so then my next thing is after we find out what law then, did we follow the process? And see, this is where my agitation comes in. It's because we've been asking this since January. And then everybody went into these secret squirrel meetings. And then voila, there's this baked out a proposal that that is not well thought out. Um, we've had parents that called yesterday to some of the schools trying to see about enrolling their kids. And the responses were not good. It was that, did you, you know, did you miss the April deadline? I can pull up the text message. And, um, there was a, a meeting that was called by parents because they were saying that they, at one of the schools, Lakeshore Schools, because they said that they had not heard about what was, how this was going to impact their community. So, um, there's a lot that goes on in this. And I don't want us to get to yesterday that the board did not sign a cooperative agreement and now it's their fault again. Because I'm asking about who wrote the proposal? Who is the name, who does that name belong to? The state of Michigan's plan for Benton Harbor? And I've not been able, and I've asked several people. So, and I've not been able to get a thorough answer that just points me to, to the law.
No one will take responsibility.
Terminating the cooperative agreement has nothing to do with the governor's plan. So I'm not saying that it's the board's fault. I'm saying this is just between the board and me, we aren't communicating.
They've got a lot coming up then, so I'm sure they.
It has nothing to do with the governor's.
Their attorney. Because the last time they were here, they were being, they were told that they had to stay with the CEO. So that's, that's.
They had to stay, we told them that they had to stay with the CEO until either, until the contract expired or June 30th.
Well, they were also being told that they had three options in that, that we were never, we went back and forth on whether or not we were clear on whether they would not, they would get their, 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 um, power back. That was never clear.
They wanted their, they wanted.
They wanted their power back that day.
They wanted it, they wanted to terminate the cooperative agreement as of March 11th. I said, no. And then we really didn't talk about terminating again until last week, which I thought was a good idea as this plan unfolded for Bob to resign, for the interim to put in place, and then terminate the cooperative agreement so that they would have authority to start working on their strategic plan process and to develop their own budget and pass it.
And I don't want to get into a back and forth about that. But at one time, you all came here and there was three recommendations and you weren't sure which one, that the Attorney General, I think it was, we needed an Attorney General opinion. Sheila, you and I talked and you were saying, no, the board is going to get their power back, but they have a contract, so they have to stay with the CEO. But then we came back to the table and it was unclear, it was ambiguous again.
And that was a separate contract outside of the consent agreement.
No, it's a cooperative agreement. Consent agreement was with Treasury.
Outside of the cooperative agreement, there was a contract with the CEO saying that he would still be there three years, five years, however long it was.
Right.
And that's what we were being told, that he would probably still be there because he still had a contract.
Or they could buy out his contract.
Correct, or he could resign.
Or he could resign. They could buy out his contract, he could resign.
And, and I could, we could go back, I think it was the May agenda, May, whenever, May, April. April, when they were here and they, they presented that. It was, it was, it was pretty ambiguous.
So the, the CEO was under what?
The CEO, the CEO was under a cooperative agreement. The cooperative agreement was with the Benton Harbor Board and the SRO.
Okay.
And then.
But I don't understand, they, they could terminate the, the.
The language in the cooperative agreement says if both parties mutually agree to terminate the cooperative agreement, they can do so as long as it's put in writing. With Dr. Herrera's resignation, the Benton Harbor Board, we will, the, with, with Dr. Herrera's resignation, he was leaving. Benton Harbor would be without a superintendent. And so we wanted to ensure that the Benton Harbor Board had the authority to appoint the interim superintendent. So that was one of the reasons why we wanted to ask the Benton Harbor Board if they wanted to terminate the cooperative agreement. They would give them the authority then to hire an interim superintendent.
Well, the last time they were here, they were being told, they, they were pretty much being forced to go with the CEO. The CEO called me and told me that he did not want to be, uh, he, 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 he felt, he didn't want to imposition the board. He felt that the board had already been imposition by the state enough. And he no longer wanted to be, um, he didn't want, it was a forced relationship. So I think that, that whole plan of working with, um, the CEO went away. And then I think that, then to me, then, then the proposal, uh, came about. But I, I just think that there's been a lot that has been opposed upon this. I do agree upon, upon this board. I know that the district is not perfect. I know that they have a lot of things to work through. But I am just concerned because we have so many districts that are facing the same, um, situation. And if we continue to do things the way that we're doing them, we may as well just, just in one sweep, just close all of our black and brown communities and put them under whatever experiment we want to put them under. And let me just read this from a parent. Um, they called, uh, uh, one of the schools and they said that the person answering the phone that they were directed to said that they hadn't heard anything about, about that, meaning enrolling their kid. Nothing had, had been confirmed. Asked if I completed an application for schools of choice in April, uh, this is the school, which was the deadline. I said, I didn't know my son's school was closing until last week. She then said, well, nothing has been decided yet. I said, well, on the news, they said if the high school didn't close, the district was being dissolved. So I needed to enroll him either way. She then said the governor is still working on that and some other districts are pulling together to see how they can help the BH, the Benton Harbor situation. That she said, we are not moving to take applications. So, I mean, I, I, I appreciate the governor because it does sound like she's trying to work with the board and what, whatever financial and acad, what plans they're, they're putting together. I know others are working with them and we're supporting them and help, trying to hear out what their plans are. I don't know what, what a viable, uh, plan is. So I really appreciate the governor listening to them. But this kind of stuff that these, again, these tactics that we've seen used in the previous administration just can't happen, uh, in this administration. And then us as a, as a state board, we can't give over our authority to any other entity. And I'm not clear that, that we're not being blamed if we're not the ones being blamed, because that's what I'm being asked, is this is a state board of, I mean, this is a MDE issue. That the governor is, 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 is leading. So, uh, I, I, I want to see in writing what is the legislation attached to? And, and then, once we find out the legislation, have we followed the proper processes? Uh, and then what role are we in the state, uh, that authored the plan?
So I can do, we can give you some of that, which is the role that we played in authoring the plan and what authority we have. That's all, I, I can't tell you about the governor's authority or legislative authority. But we can definitely tell you what we are responsible for.
So who's going to, who's finally going to, to tell us what the, the law or the authority was that, that put out that proposal?
We can ask the AG's office.
Marty and I just looked in the Inxter Buena Vista legislation was very specific to those two districts. So, um, it's not that legislation I don't believe that they're utilizing to talk about closure. But that's only because I'm reading a article from 2013.
Right, and when I, when I asked this of the governor's office, it was, in, in, in one sentence, they mentioned a debt and they also mentioned reading, third grade reading levels. So that's why I'm, I'm, I'm really confused.
I, I think Pam, that they're using that as examples for financial distress as well as, um, lack of academic achievement.
And then what law backs that up? And then, like I said, I was in the treasurer's office and he gave, he, he said, he gave me the name of a school. Uh, and he said, it can't be that because we have schools that are, are far worse. And I haven't looked them up, um, to see.
Can I say that there's something, the governor, on July 7, 2015, the governor signed P A 109 to 114, giving the Department of Treasury additional financial authority and responsibilities over K-12 schools, immediate school districts, and public school academies. I don't know if that just is what the, they have to come up with a plan, but this sounds like it led to the Albion. I don't know.
That's the 13 legislation.
That, that, so that's just a notice of the, um, the, the fiscal.
It gives Treasury a little bit more teeth to work on the front end, um, before districts. All on deficits, so you have some fund balance requirements. And then the additional reporting for districts that are under that fund balance requirement or have, there's like three or four factors about like significant. More than 50% of their fund balance.
But it doesn't say what happens if they. Fiscal deficit.
Well, then, for the first five years, they are under our auspices and have to submit. Plan, if their dislocation plan goes further than five years, that's when they get captured. Forty, they have to do a, a dislocation plan, so that doesn't have any impact on the closure of the district.
But if they still don't, if they're still financially stressed, I'm, no, okay.
So I'm just wanting.
Legislation wouldn't give.
Who are you to close it?
The district has leveraged all of the emergency loans that the district, by law, right now, they, they.
You're talking about Benton Harbor?
And the, excuse me, Benton Harbor has leveraged the amount of dollars and the number of emergency loans that any district has. So there is no, absent of legislation, legislative change and money being put back into that fund because the emergency loan fund all school districts have access to, but, um, is, all that money is being spent on prior emergency. So I, I guess Pam, if you're referencing another district that this person was referencing in an area, I can hear that there's no one else, uh, in that area that has that many number of emergency loans. Based on those state loans.
Yeah, and I think, I, when I talk, when I think about the funding thing, I'm, I'm thinking that there are several districts who are probably, I won't say several districts, there are other districts who, who have us being on the heels of some of the, facing some of these situations. But definitely from, from the academic standpoint.
Um, and I guess my, my thinking is, I think that the board, when they were here, they gave us, or I think they had requested, I know they had requested for someone to do a strategic plan. I know they talked about not having one done under the CEO, where there was supposed to be one done. And I know that they had came up with, with some transformation plans and I know that they still are. So I guess my thought is, before we take the destructive route, that they would have been able to act on some of their plans, implement some of their plans, tweak their plans, but not to act like they weren't, weren't planning. And maybe they weren't moving fast enough. And we know this 1280C situation, kind of like threw things into a whirlwind, but.
It threw things into the whirlpool. And then when we started discussing the governor's plan, then I said, well, let's not move forward on the strategic plan because the board was working on the strategic plan. So I said to Dr. Herrera, let's stop that movement because we weren't sure where we were going to go. Then he had applied out. So I figured, okay, let's let the board take over. Let's let them start working on a strategic plan and their budget. So that's kind of where we arrived, where we arrived at last week. So the strategic plan and the board tomorrow, three board members will present to the governor's team their plan, which really is a strategic plan.
Yeah, which, which is good. I mean, I, I guess my, my thinking is, guess, I just wonder what, what, where we would have been if we would have allowed them to move forward with, with their planning versus, again. Um, and, and I come from areas where every time these news articles go out and this, uh, this doubt and this, this morale, um, buster approach happens, um, it is, it's destructive. So I'm just thinking of, of what if we would have just been more so thinking about the plan itself?
But the cooperative agreement was.
It's also destructive, what the media does too.
Things happen.
Because the media distorts the truth.
But I, I have a problem with that too, because up under the cooperative agreement, the CEO was placed and he was, that was a part of his job to create a strategic plan. Yeah.
And he was going to do that, yes, that is true.
A one-year deadline.
Yeah, he was going to do that, but then we got.
But it, it should have been done already. And they're being blamed, you know, as a local board. But then MDE, and the state placed somebody, MDE placed somebody in there to turn things around and to create a strategic plan. And that didn't happen.
Well, let me just say, he did turn things, he did turn things around. When you look at their student academic achievement and the curriculum and the training he put in for teachers, the curriculum for the resources for teaching and the training for, for teachers and their, um, benchmark assessment results for, from the fall to the, to the winter. Things, he did turn things around.
So then if they're on a different trajectory, then they shouldn't be closed.
But things, there would have been a strategic plan if it wasn't for the legislature making that decision in late December that now we're going to not have, um, the SRO and there's going to be no 1280C. Therefore, we got into this whole situation.
When, when did he start?
He started in July or August, summer.
July, so a strategic plan should have been started already before December.
But you had to put things in place. Then he was working on the strategic plan because when I got in board in December and went down and visited at the end of January, we talked about the beginning of a strategic plan. So that was going to happen. But things shifted as we got into different months.
So when was he supposed to start the strategic plan? So when was he supposed to start the strategic plan?
The strategic plan would have been a, uh, four-year plan, starting with implementing it, getting it in place with board advisement.
At what point was he supposed to start it? Because he had a year and, and a strategic plan is something that can take a while. That's not something you just sit down and write overnight. So at what point was he supposed to start it?
The strategic plan, as we discuss it, we would have started it at the beginning of this next year. So July would have started the strategic plan, but it got all convoluted. Hey, I'm not asking. Okay, it got all convoluted when, um, the legislature decided that they were going to, um, eliminate 1280C. And then we got into the whole March thing. And so the board is not to blame. I agree with Pam. The board is not to blame for not having a strategic plan. I don't think Dr. Herrera is to blame for not having a strategic plan. It's the whole, the way this thing started to unfold, as I got in here in December, because of what the legislature did. We all got caught in it.
From my understanding, it was supposed to be done within a year.
Yes, we would have, that's what I'm saying. I agree with you. We would have had a strategic plan at this point if we wouldn't have gotten into, okay, once everybody started understanding that 1280C was gone. As I see it, that happened right around the end of February, March. Then we got the AG's opinion and then things started to, you know, get in. Then we got the AG's opinion and then things started to, you know, get in place where there was a governor's plan and we, that's been going on since April. So I put the strategic plan on hold because it didn't make sense, if the board was going to take over July 1st, for them not to be involved with the strategic plan.
Even if it wasn't completed, it should have been started, it should have been started. And that was a part of his contract and that was not.
It was started, it just wasn't out.
So, so, so a strategic plan has been started.
No, we started to put the strategic plan together and then stopped because I believe that it wasn't going to make sense not to have both entities involved with it, and I still think that.
And, and then again, there is a company, a firm, that they are consulting about doing a strategic plan, and that's been put on, on hold as well.
Because we didn't know if Dr. Herrera was gonna be here, we didn't know if the governor's plan was gonna be accepted. Remember, all this got put in play the last couple of months, which really convoluted everything. And I don't think anybody's to blame for not having a strategic plan.
I think that would have been helpful if there would have been forward movement so that they could have presented the plan to the governor and said, this is the plan that we developed.
But if there was a city.
And this, we had an outside firm come in, they helped us, Dr. Herrera was at the table. This is the plan that we have developed.
In retrospect, maybe it would, but when the governor's plan started to be put in place, it seemed to me, and the board was gonna take over July 1st.
So I've been told that the governor put a proposal on the table, now you're saying the governor's plan. So is it a plan or is it a proposal?
Well, I've been calling it, I thought it was called a plan. But plan or proposal.
It's a governor's plan that was proposed to Benton Harbor.
Correct.
So, it's supposed to be a proposal.
And I, I think.
That they have to vote on because they have local control. So they should have still had their plan.
And, and to Tiffany's.
Put on the table.
Tiffany's point about the plan, the fact that a plan does not exist, that it should have, the fact that they were moving on, get, bringing in, getting the contracts and move forward to do a strategic plan themselves because it wasn't done under the CEO. But in the, out in the atmosphere is that the governor's plan is the only plan that there is and the board didn't even have a plan, and they've been working on this forever and they didn't even have a plan. It's, it's, it's just almost like saying they didn't sign the cooperative agreement, I don't know what they're up to. It, there's, there, there's whole stories behind this, and when we put that out there, it makes our communities look bad. And then what happens is the communities start inward fighting. And then the destruction, I mean, that, that just adds to the destruction. And I've seen this over and over and over again, when the state imposes upon communities. And as much as we wanna help, it, it, as, I'm wanting to say we, because I don't believe in it, as much as you may want to help, it, it hurts.
This, the cooperative agreement was put in place. I think that it was something that I wouldn't recommend again, but it happened. And things happened the last few months. And we'll see what happens tomorrow when Benton Harbor presents their proposal, their plan, and we'll go from there.
Right, but, but it can't happen again, so that's what makes me want to say something to the point of closures, that if, if anything is, is, is proposed around closures that involves M D E, that somehow there's, there's more thought.
Well, there won't, there's no SRO, so there's no closure as of July 1st. So it'll just be director of partnership districts.
So, and, and up under the partnership agreement that they'll be going into.
If they accept the governor's plan.
Do you have a plan for them as a partnership district that you've developed?
No, I gave examples of what partnership districts do. I then said, maybe if we go with the plan, we should have, I just titled this, an enhanced liaison. Somebody that works longer, more days, and is spends more time in Benton Harbor than the liaisons that we have now. So that is, we've talked about that a couple of times, we'd have to hire that person.
Has that been presented to the governor? Because I know a part of it is the scores.
Yes.
And has it been presented to the governor that Mr. Herrera went into the community and they were on a different trajectory?
I don't know what you mean.
That the scores improved and that teacher training improved, different things have improved. Was that presented as well?
Yes.
As you said, was it presented?
No.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Was it shared with, with the governor?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, even when they came, remember the teachers and he, and it, it talked about things, the scores going higher, the teachers saying, and that they wanted to continue working with him. They had, they had a lot of change.
Is the scores, but they're on a different road, they're on a different path now with the work that the CEO did. And then they will be going up under the partnership agreement, which will help to improve their scores even more.
So my, my thinking is, tomorrow they'll present a plan, they've been working with different people to, to, to do their plan, to enhance this. Like I said, they have some financial stuff that they will be submitting, so I'm hopeful that, that it will be a productive and favorable meeting with the governor. But what I don't want us to walk away from here and, and we all just get away from this. Because there were some huge mistakes that were made, in my opinion, and I still wanna see what law we went out on because this can't happen ever again. We cannot keep having, these communities have to fall, operate under this threat, these threats. And these communities have to deal with what the, the trauma and re-traumatization that they're going through at our hands. So I'm looking forward thinking, because I'm hoping that the governor's office, M D E, and the local board and the local community are gonna move forward with an aggressive and a well-thought-out plan to get them on, on track. That's, that does not involve closure. However, this, this can't keep happening, and we can't have the promise of leadership that has all the right ideas, all the right thoughts, but then when we put it, when we get into action, it looks reminiscent of things that we've seen in the past.
You had stated you wanted to do a statement, do you wanna put a motion?
May I just interject for a moment, please, because you mentioned this Tiffany, and I know Pam, you mentioned it too. With the elimination of, the SRO had the authority to close districts, close schools. And if you remember, Brian brought the SRO out of D T M B to M D E to prevent closures. When the SRO position goes away, M D E has no authority to close schools or districts.
What, July 1st?
Pardon me?
Do before July 1st?
But we wouldn't do, we wouldn't do that.
Okay.
M, M D E would not do that, and the SRO position goes away as of June 30th. Therefore, the department has no authority to close schools or districts.
And that may be why they don't wanna come out of a cooperative agreement, they may feel like they're gonna fall. Because you, you say you could end the cooperative agreement today instead of June 30th?
Yeah, we can sign off.
Yes, I think that they might have some, some reservations. But, so that, that's, that's one thought, I, I hear you. But I still just wanna know what made us step out that aggressively, that boldly. And from what I'm hearing at some of the tables, they were, it was like a take it or leave it discussion. And so I wanna know what made us walk out that boldly, because I don't want that to ever happen again. And I wanna know what gave us the authority to do that. Yeah, let me stop using we, what gave the state plan author or authors the authority to do that?
We'll ask the attorney general's office to give us some guidance on that. We, we can tell you what our authority is under the cooperative agreement.
Okay, what, what will happen tomorrow when they present this plan? And who are they gonna present the plan to?
Presenting their plan, their Benton Harbor board members and their attorneys the governor's team, governor's attorneys, Bill and I, and representatives from Treasury.
Good, so you'll be there. So, so then they're, they're going to match out their proposal, Benton Harbor's proposal.
Yes.
The boards, yes.
The Benton Harbor board, yes, members, not all of them, some of them.
Three board.
But they're representing the board.
Yeah, representing the entire, yes.
And I assume at that meeting, you mentioned attorneys will be there because, as you know, just sending students to another district, because it's already been mentioned that some of these districts have already closed their school of choice.
Hopefully it won't be.
I mean, if I'm a parent of a fresh freshman child, I may wanna move my child this next year if in, in, you know, if they indeed are gonna close high school. There has to be some sort of written agreement with these districts in order to get these students in.
And that was going to happen next year, I don't think that they had one or five yet.
We'll know more tomorrow.
Yeah, let me, and let me say this, because I do wanna put this out here. As a person who has gone to a school where I've been the only African-American in my class sometimes, and a person who has been, there's only been one non-African-American, that experience is so different and I would never do that to a child in high school.
I'm not advocating for it, I'm just.
Do that to a child in high school and never under force. It, it, I, I, I just can't eat, I mean, it. I, I can't, I can't talk about how unprepared and unthought-out this plan was and how disappointed I am in whoever the author was of, or, or are, who they are of, of this plan without having that type of, that type of input.
Could you ask the question, or has the question been asked? The Lake Michigan Charter, quote-unquote, where they were gonna do dual enrollment, early college credits. Has it been asked and whether that could happen at Benton Harbor High School, leave those students intact and provide that program or that framework for them within their own building? It may still have to be chartered under Lake Michigan, but what I'm thinking is that keeps the student body intact, keeps them in their building and provides them an opportunity that's a very positive opportunity, especially if they pick up.
Judy, I would hope, and I don't, I don't know who you were directing that to.
I was just talking out loud.
Yeah, I mean, because I think that if we have thoughts, the board is, is open to thoughts. So I think we should give, give the local board.
Benton Harbor Board?
Local board our thoughts, that they're gonna work together with their administration to put together. And I pray that after tomorrow, they're able to make those decisions as to how they move forward.
Can I, I'm sorry, I keep trying to look at the laws to see if there's any thing that we're missing, if it would be at all instructive. So there's this, I saw on the Treasury's website.
The, the one under P A 436? But I don't think that that's.
Six, and then, there's also, it speaks to districts or PSAs that are determined to be in a financial emergency may choose from one of these options, a consent agreement, emergency manager, neutral evaluation, or chapter nine bankruptcy.
All under P A 436?
There's all reasons the school just may be subject to. Hi, what's that? Sorry, what did you say? I wanna hear it, yeah.
The, the process would have to be, there's a process that goes along with it.
So was that done for Benton Harbor?
It was back in.
So that's what we're operating under?
That's not, that's not the authority that, that.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure.
That would be the authority, yeah.
I, I think some, we've already. Yeah, I was asking.
That was at, that was at on the same time that they changed the law. Their manager or closure to adding the additional options where you could have a.
We've asked. Yeah.
So that, they added the other.
So they've had a consent.
Options right around.
They've all moved, so they've gone through.
Because we exhausted that, I think. So I understand your question, like, so what authority? Because I'm not finding any legislation.
So she was asking me to reach out to the AG's office to ask this question. So I wanna be sure I have, understand what the question is. Pam, what I was seeing your question to be is that you were asking what authority was this plan developed under?
And who's, and who's the author? Who falls under the name of the State of Michigan?
I don't know, I can answer that question, my choose aside, but I can ask a lot of the.
So is, is it, is it what you want? Just those questions to be answered?
I guess, yeah.
I, I had one other little thing.
Okay, I'm sorry, no, 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 because I can be thinking.
Okay, okay. And I, and I was just talking about the, and I know I bring up special education all the time, but in this, the rules around special education and what, to make sure that there's, the needs of these kids are being considered. I'm just wondering, because I look at the, I'm, I'm assuming the thing at the Lake Michigan Academy is not gonna take a majority, they're not gonna take kids with cognitive impairments or it's gonna leave the, and, and I'm told that right now, the, the level of kids with I E Ps in Benton Harbor is pretty high, higher than the state average, for sure.
They only have the capacity to take about one-third of the kids.
Okay, and they all, but they're not, and they're not gonna take the kids that are.
Right, well technically, they can't deny any child who applies.
Yeah, but that they're not gonna succeed enough, you know what I mean? If they don't have the services and the supports.
They should be providing those.
Yeah, so that's my question. You know, what, are those things gonna be there in place for them? Are families that have kids with disabilities gonna be able to keep their children in one school? You know, are they gonna be shuttered? I'm, that's just a question that I have.
They probably haven't thought of any of that.
So let me, let me say this. If we can make a motion and somebody can help me, I don't know, that any, any plan on the table now or moving forward that involves closure, I would say, at best, has to come through this board before we're speaking out about it.
I don't think you have the, I don't.
Because everything is going away, you're saying, because, so you're saying we won't sign on to anything else that has closure?
We won't because we don't have, we don't have the authority.
So the reason why we signed on now is because we have the authority to do it. When I say we, because you've had a quote in the newspaper and there's, again.
But just remember, everything that you see in the paper isn't always truthful.
Okay.
Accurate.
Accurate. Accurate and truthful.
Now that is very true.
Because as, 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 as the paper reported today, that Bill rescinded Dr. Herrera's resignation.
Yeah.
And he didn't.
He did not.
I don't know.
So, okay, so there's, there's no authority, there, there's never a time, we can't see this ever happening again then.
We don't have the authority to make it happen.
We can still.
Other people can.
Legislature, the governor.
Opposing.
Have, have we?
We can make it, I guess we, through the legislative committee, we could make a statement opposing.
Okay, was any plans currently on the table or moving forward? Okay, okay.
In our group and see, Marty will lead us and see if there's anything we can write.
Okay.
And, and can we make a recommendation that that the local level is at the table if any of these conversations come up again?
I, I think we can write anything. Yeah, we can write, you know, we can write anything in our statement.
I mean.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We can write that.
Maybe we can set a precedence.
Yes.
Well, we could at least expect that if a superintendent comes on, you know, a superintendent would, would honor it, so.
Yeah, there wouldn't be.
If, if that were to come up, yeah.
Without support, being aware.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I believe we have concluded this agenda item and we'll move on to the next one, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
The next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update. I will now turn this over to Lupe Ramos Montini, chairperson of the board's legislative committee.
Okay, Marty, do they have their copy over?
Marilyn has copies.
Marilyn has copies. I emailed it last week and then we have copies reminding everyone.
Okay, so we can go home. We'll get to this item and we have given you a booklet now. We're really working hard on all these different things, items that are priorities to the members of the State Board. So, the Legislative Committee, Lupe, Ramos Montini, Judy Pritchard, Nikki Snyder, and Tiffany Tilly come before you with this report. And so, I will hand it over to Marty. But I know that you read the page nine, which is the last page in this document, is the statement supporting the full range of opportunities in the Michigan merit curriculum. And so, that's what, one item we will be voting on. That's an action item. So, and Judy will be presenting that item to us a little later. So, Marty?
Yeah, so the Legislative Committee met on the 28th of May, is that correct? And, and so, there are, in this report, there are some bills that, legislative updates that we have discussed before, like the post-Labor Day start has passed the House Education Committee, spent on the House Ways and Means Committee for consideration. There are no plans that we understand to move those. Public innovation districts, those bills were discussed, I believe, at last month's meeting. They did get reported out of the House Education Committee. And we opposed, the department opposed those bills last, no, maybe they didn't get out of committee. They're not out of committee yet, are they? Are those out of committee yet, the pit bills? They are not, but they're being discussed in the House Education Committee. The department opposed the bills last session and we have opposed them this session as written. They continue to receive consideration in the House Education. Other bills that were discussed last meeting is the bills to amend the Michigan merit curriculum. And you can see on page five, a brief description of what those do. And then, I believe Cassandra had requested last month to prepare a statement on those bills. And so, I'll pass it over to Judy.
All right, thank you. As Lupe has indicated, on page nine, we have a statement that we have drafted that hopefully encompasses a couple of things. One is obviously oppose any attempt to change requirements in the merit curriculum related to the arts or CTE because of some of the bills that are currently in process over there. But we also recognize the fact that there needs to be flexibility sometimes, especially for high school students, either get themselves into credit problems or they get into credit problems, I shouldn't blame the student. Or other things can happen and they might need to adjust their curriculum. And that certainly happens with special needs students sometimes where we have to do a personal curriculum with them. So, we tried to also include in there some language about, and that's what you'll see in the last paragraph, last couple of sentences, about the fact if there does need to be any changes in the curriculum or in course of study, that that, that parents and counselors obviously be involved in that, which is kind of the practice now, hopefully, in most high schools. So, anyway, so there it is. So, on your mark, it's set.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Are we making a motion to adopt the statement?
I'll make a motion to adopt the statement.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. And now we'll open it to discussion. Cassandra?
So, I read this several times and I have to admit, I didn't quite understand what we were saying.
Okay.
So, are we opposing, are we supporting, are we taking no stance whatsoever?
Well, the first two paragraphs basically say, you know, we support a well-rounded curriculum. So, that's, that's more setup. Really, the first sentence of the last paragraph, "We oppose any attempt to change state law that may lead local districts to eliminate vital programs in the arts and world languages," because that had been specifically what we had talked about at the table here. But then again, as I said, we had this discussion about, but we also recognize sometimes there needs to be flexibility. So, we added that last part of that fourth paragraph. The first two paragraphs really are just indicating that the board, you know, supports a well-rounded curriculum.
But the third paragraph kind of alludes to the fact that we're supporting it. And then the fourth paragraph alludes to the fact that we don't support-